Oh, I'm sorry, you know, I didn't get back that. You had sent me an email about.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, since you're here. Yeah, I mean, you want to do it separately? Yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, Clark. This is a new camera? Who's on the camera? Oh. How are you doing? Good. It is, huh? Yeah. That's a nice setup. How's filmmaking business been going? Got any new documentaries going? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, yeah. You got a new camera, too. Always upgrading, huh, Keith? Pass that water over this way, please, if you don't mind.
You guys ready?
We got one right there, Cliff.
I know. You guys ready?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Brisbane Council meeting. This is our first hearing. The last time we talked about the Baylands was just an overview. So this is the first council hearing in regards to the Baylands project. All right, if you would please rise and join us for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So tonight's public hearing is in regards to the remediation of the site and, you know, dealing with, you know, the, let me just read it, give you the official subject of it. So it's the Brisbane Baylands Planning Applications Concept Plans, Specific Plan, Case SP-01-06, General Plan Amendment Cases JP-01-06, backslash JP-0110, and Related Final Environmental Impact Report, SCH number 2006022136, Site Remediation, Title 27 Landfill Closure and Related Issues. So with that, I will take a staff report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. We're going to have a, I apologize, it's going to be a little longer staff report than we like to do with these as matters fairly, some detail and technical issues. We will have several members to participate and make the presentation. You start with Lloyd Zola, who's our EIR consultant, Dr. Susan Mirons, who is our remediation peer reviewer, who was hired by the city as well, as well as Ignacio DeRit from Sea Clear, which is a nonprofit related with brownfield redevelopment as a general topic. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lloyd to kick off. Let's hope we have the presentation up there. It's on the way. There we are. Thank you. And what we'll be talking about tonight, as the mayor said, is site remediation and Title 27 landfill closure. And the areas that we're talking about, when we talk about landfill closure, that is the eastern portion of the site that's outlined in red, when we're talking about remediation, we're talking about the former rail yard that's divided into two areas, OU1 to the north and then OU2, standing for operable units, to the south. Now, the various regulatory authorities that we'll talk about tonight in relation to landfill closure and remediation is the city is the land use authority. So, and you retain authority over land use throughout this entire process of general plan, specific plan, and all the remediation. Land use authority always rests with you as the city. In terms of site remediation and cleanup of the former rail yard, the Department of California Department of Toxic Substances Control has regulatory authority over the northern portion of site, operable unit one. The Regional Water Quality Control Board has regulatory authority over the remediation of the southerly, southwesterly portion of the site of the former rail yard. And Title 27 landfill closure regulatory authority rests with both the regional board as well as San Mateo County Health System, who's acting in, for CalRecycle as the local enforcement authority. Now, the way these two types of authorities fit together is the city of Brisbane, your authority, your responsibility in this process of remediation is to determine appropriate land use for the bayland, the types of land uses that are appropriate for the baylands, the intensity and the distribution of uses. And then it becomes the responsibility of those regulatory agencies to ensure that the site is made safe for the uses you as the city determine to be appropriate. Now, what those regulatory agencies will do in ensuring safety is they will review the existing studies and require any needed additional studies to do their assessments of what is needed to characterize the site. They will set risk-based cleanup goals through a human health risk assessment. They will review and approve remediation plans to achieve those goals. They will undertake project-level CEQA review for site remediation. They'll oversee the actual physical remediation of the site, certify that completion, and then undertake post-remediation activities. And we'll put that later into what order does that go in in relation to your approvals. Now, some of the key terms we'll use tonight, already I've referred to remediation and Title 27 landfill closure. Remediation are the actions dealing with cleaning up of hazardous materials, in this case, within the former rail yard. So that is cleanup, monitoring, testing, analysis, related to hazardous materials. Landfill closure is the requirements contained in California law Title 27 for the closure and post-closure of the landfill. So we'll hear the landfill closed in 1967. What is this closure about? But under state law, there's formal procedures and requirements for a closed landfill to prevent contact with waste. And that's what we mean in relation to Title 27 landfill closure because the actual landfill closed just about 50 years ago. Hazardous material is another term we'll use, and that is any substance that can create potential harm to human health, as opposed to a hazardous waste, which is a waste substance that could pose a present or potential threat to human health. And then you'll also hear the technical terms constituent of concern or contaminant of concern, which is hazardous material, but the technical term will be constituent of concern because that's the concern that they have in doing these studies. You will hear the terms exposure pathway and exposure route. An exposure pathway is the course a chemical can take from the source to actual exposure to human or the environment. And the reference to a complete exposure route would include a chemical source. What is the contaminant? How does it migrate through the environment? Where does it expose itself to the environment or to a contact with an organism, soil, air, or water? And the route that it takes into the organism. Now, an exposure route is the way that you get affected by it. So either ingestion, inhalation, through the skin, or injection. So those will be the technical terms that you'll hear through the evening. We'll also talk about site characterization and waste characterization. And those are the studies done up front to identify site characterization. What are the contaminants, in this case, within the former landfill? What are their nature? What is their extent? And waste characterization refers to what's in the landfill. What are the constituents of the waste inside the landfill? Two different kinds of studies. And so with that, we'll have Ignacio talk about some of the general principles of remediation and landfill closure, and then we'll get into some specifics about existing conditions and liability and other issues related to the baylands itself.
Thank you, Lloyd, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Ignacio DeRit. I'm with the Center for Creative Land Recycling. We're a nonprofit, and we provide technical assistance to cities and states across the west, the west coast, in dealing in remediation and reuse of contaminated properties. And before that, I actually used to work for the city of Emeryville, and so I actually helped with the cleanup of many of the sites that are there. And as a result of that, advised many cities and states in their own goals to remediate and redevelop contaminated sites. So a few basic points, and I'm a generalist, so I'm not a scientist. I used to work, city staff, so, you know, I tried to work with consultants and with lawyers and with our own city planners, and we work with developers and regulators and figure out how to get these things done. Many sites get redeveloped, many sites don't. And so our goal is, my goal is actually to be the intermediary with staff, consultants, and our city management and council to figure out how these things work. And so there, in my experience, California has a very strong regulatory hierarchy. There are several regulatory agencies, there are many laws. You heard Lloyd talk about Title 27, but there's a laundry list of other laws we're not going to get into, but they really work with each other. And in the 30 years that I've been working in Sea Clear, with Sea Clear as well as that, we've seen many contaminated sites get redeveloped. And while there are many challenges, the laws and the processes are very careful that we are not aware of really major releases or impacts from a site being remediated, cleaned up, and reused, and something falling through the cracks. There are older cases, but in the recent history, it's tightened up and it is quite reliable. Now, another thing to realize is sites are rarely cleaned up to pristine levels. When you say pristine, something you can eat. I mean, you know, kid, something safe for a child to crawl on and put dirt in their mouth, or maybe drink water. That's what we refer to as pristine. But in the redevelopment world, and even when sites that aren't even that remediated completely, they don't actually go to zero readings of any contaminant because really that's almost impossible. There are background levels. There's been mining the last 200, 300 years. All those contaminants made it down the rivers and streams. It went into the air. There's leaded gas. There are background levels, natural occurring contaminants. So it really never, there are very few sites, or actually, I don't know of site that's actually been cleaned up to pristine levels. Another reason why sites are not cleaned up to even background levels is that, when you think about it, if you have contaminated soil on a site and you want to dig it all up, it has to be brought somewhere. Now, the process of bringing that soil somewhere else has actual risks. It's load, it's digging it out, loading it, driving it through traffic. Those are, it's like crossing the street. There are risks. So regulatory agencies have actually quantified these, and in actual remediation calculations, risk calculations, they actually take into account the risk of the cleanup activities as well. So that's another reason why sites are rarely cleaned up to background levels. So what levels are they cleaned up to? So there are what are called up cleanup numbers in lookup tables. These are prescriptive numbers that are based on complex calculations developed by scientists and regulatory agencies. And these are default numbers. They're essentially very conservative, and these are screening levels to figure out how a site, more or less, how they feel the level of contamination is. So, and there are different cleanup levels for different land uses. So there normally is unrestricted use and commercial or industrial uses. And site-specific cleanup levels can be calculated for any development. So many sites that are cleaned up and reused now actually go to the next level because the conservative, the lookup tables are quite conservative and very expensive to clean up to. Now, which means commercially zoned property will be set up to commercial cleanup level. So if there's a, you have a commercial area in your community, normally regulatory agencies, when they find that the site has to be cleaned up, they will set the cleanup goal as commercial, unless they know or they're told that there's a plan to clean up the site, to reuse the site to other levels, maybe a park, residential, or even single-family homes. Once the regulatory agency knows that, then they will consider the higher cleanup standards once there is a formal planning permit submitted. So you just can't tell a regulatory agency, five years from now, that's probably going to be residential. Well, that's, for them, that's not a, an application where they would impose a residential cleanup level because they would actually want to see an actual application submitted. Now, sites that are not cleaned up to these background levels need to be, you know, the residents, the users, the construction workers need to be protected from anything that's left behind. And that's where institutional controls and engineering controls come in. So here's, that's a schematic of what goes into what is called a risk assessment. And this risk assessment, essentially, in Lehman's terms, the regulatory agencies look at all the, where the contamination, residual contamination is left, if it's in the soil or groundwater, and the manner in which users could be exposed in the future. So for instance, if it's a, if it's going to be a basketball court and they figure out it's going to be paved over, then the dermal contact won't be there because there's going to be pavement there. So they close that, the pathway from the soil contamination to the basketball player. That's an example of the pathway, I mean, the exposure, and the pathway would be actually breathing, or touching, or eating the dust of the remaining contaminated soil. So that's an example. Another example would be if there is groundwater contamination that the regulatory agency finds can remain but could be a risk for future users, they will evaluate whether, if there's a vapor exposure, or if it's affecting a body of water, then they will try, they will figure out what the pathways are and try to close those. And they will, and they will also calculate what levels that can remain so that it does not reach the ecological or the ecological receptors or the future users of that property. And again, back to the cleanup numbers, there are several that are being, that are typically used. Again, these are, and these cleanup numbers are based on the exposure, so that's the media and the pathway. So media is soil, groundwater, or vapor. Duration and land use, if it's residential, if it's commercial. How long do people stay there? If it's residential, they use 24 hours. If it's commercial, they use nine hours or eight hours. And the receptor would be the people who are using it. So the EPA has regional screening levels, and California has a number of other levels that they use. And these guide the regulatory agencies in what the safe levels are. Now, here's a sort of a schematic of the different pathways to regulatory clearance of a site. Lloyd mentioned, you know, Title 27, which would go to where the CalRecycle is, working with the LEA and the COOPA. And there are other pathways there. For instance, DTSC handles meth labs, they handle, they handle voluntary cleanups, they handle state superfund, the regional board handles petroleum and groundwater issues, and they interact. So you have sites that may have one or two, one agency, if it's a simple site, sometimes several agencies get involved. And there's another agency, the OIA, that actually does the risk calculations for the regional board. DTSC has their own risk assessors. So it's a very complex system that your environmental consultants and their lawyers will be familiar with, depending on the land uses and the contaminants that are found and the history of the site. So these all play a role in which agencies are involved. Okay, I'm not moving anymore. Okay, I'm sorry about it. So DTSC, I had mentioned, is the Department of Toxic Substances Control, the LEA, the local enforcement agency, Lloyd alluded to them, in San Mateo County, I guess it's the county health, county health. And OIA is the Office of Environmental Hazard, and it's a very complicated, but they're in charge of calculating risk assessments for the other agencies in California, Environmental Protection Agency. I'm sorry, now it went too far. So, going back again to, reiterating that sites are not always, are rarely cleaned up to unrestricted levels, and residual contamination is often left in place, and that's where engineering controls, institutional controls, and together these are all called land use controls. So engineering controls, what are they? Well, these are designed, these are basically built, you know, structures or measures to stop the migration of contaminants to receptors. So for instance, there are many buildings around the Bay Area that have podiums, so they have parking, built under residential or commercial uses. And these are, this is almost a default feature where designers and agencies know that they want to restrict any kind of contact between the native ground and the occupants. So they put them in the barrier of, really, of parking. And in addition to that, the, under the parking structures, there will probably be vapor barriers and geofabric that alert people, future users, people digging, that there is contamination left behind and they should be careful. There are walls in the subsurface that inhibit migration of groundwater. They also have pipes that absorb vapors and filter them and bring them above ground. So these are just a couple of examples. Institutional controls, these are more like soft tools. They're your laws, your regulations, your processes. An example of those are deed restrictions. Much like a city can put a deed restriction on a site, regulatory agencies could put a deed restriction on a site and say, no residential can ever be on the site unless you do more cleanup. That's a typical deed restriction in many commercial uses. There are also tools that alert planning departments that there's contamination remaining in place. The California EPA has two websites called GeoTracker and EnviroStore that show the history of cleanup of a site and any institutional controls or engineering controls remaining on a site. And they'll also mention when reports are due and even who the staff persons involved are. Now, typically, when a site is contaminated, it has to be cleaned up. So the report's prepared, the regulatory agency gets involved, and they do a cleanup plan. And if sites are, if there's anything left behind, they do their institutional controls and their, and their engineering controls. Now, if to overlay that with a redevelopment proposal, what happens is, and so this is when it's useful for regulatory agencies to know whether there's a plan involved. The regulatory agency won't tell you that that's suitable for residential, that's suitable for commercial. They'll tell you whether your cleanup plan is good enough for residential, or your cleanup plan is good enough for commercial, or if you do different measures, what kind of ECs you need, what kind of ICs you need. So for a development proposal that has maybe different land uses proposed, maybe there are parks, maybe there's office, maybe there's mixed-use residential, they actually want to know where those are on a plan. It's not even, it's not even sufficient to say this site will be mixed-use. They'll want to know where's the commercial, where's the park, where's the parking? And so these all interplay because the regulatory agency will actually even sometimes recommend, in this area, it's better for you to put parking because it will be difficult to put a sensitive use here because of the contamination there. And so when the development plan is proposed, if there are four different or five different scenarios, you're going to have five different cleanup plans, or even more. So they're moving parts, and that's really the way most development plans on contaminated sites go. So more about regulatory involvement. Now, under, I think it's CEQA or the environmental laws, anything, any cleanup more than $2,000 has to go through its own CEQA. Now, normally, CEQA for a cleanup can be combined with CEQA for a development plan. So this actually better go, going hand in hand. DTSC has a very robust public participation requirement. It is required in their statute. And oftentimes, you will have risk assessments. And they will have staff that will explain what the risk assessments mean, and if you can't, you know, and you can actually get assistance in understanding what these risk assessments, you know, what the process is, what inputs and outputs go into them. risk assessments, you know, what the process is, what inputs and outputs go into them. So, going toward the end, the goal here really is no further action for any site. Now, many sites take a long time to get to a no further action because many sites will need years of operations and maintenance before the regulatory agency is comfortable that there are no more risks involved in the site. And, and, but once that NFA is issued, this cannot be pulled, pulled off, I mean, can't be taken back unless there's a more digging on the site or there's new reuses planned. It's sort of like, you know, well, well, yeah, it, it's like getting a new land use permit. DTSC will reopen it if there's a new discretionary approvals required on that site. Now, for title, for, for land use, landfill closure, there, the closure for landfill is kind of similar to a cleanup of a site that isn't being redeveloped or anything. The regulatory agency, in this case, it would be the local enforcement agency, wants to be sure that what, whatever's remaining on the site is not migrating to this, to the ground, particularly groundwater, and that the methane is, is being watched and is being controlled. And, and so, this goes for many, many years and it also depends on what kind of landfill it is, because there are many different kinds of landfills. There, there's municipal landfills, there are construction debris, there are dumps that are just never regulated. And so, so of course, the most stringent ones are where there's a lot of organic material which could pose a, where the contamination is volatile and could, there are vapors and there's groundwater contamination. So these are capped and they're stabilized. And it takes several, many years before the readings are safe enough that it can be closed. Now overlay that, if, if there's a proposal to reuse a former landfill, then that's where DTSC and regional board come in because they have to go back and re, kind of review what's there, is the, are the caps or the slurry walls stable enough? What do they need to do to ensure that the protections for the landfill and what's left there continue on when the site is redeveloped? So, I think that's, and so in summary, regulation, there's lots of regulation in California, there are many protections and it's somewhat redundant, but it's safe for the, for the community. Sites aren't clean up all the way, but there are measures that cities can take to ensure that their protections. And in addition to what the government does, there are third-party protections as well that, that developers can offer or, or they can, or the city can actually take upon itself. All right. End of my presentation. Sorry, went long.
Thank you. No, it's okay, Ignacio. Hi, Susan.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Dr. Susan Murns. I was retained by the City of Brisbane to review the comments for the draft environmental impact report and then to provide some insight on risk-based cleanup goals. So regarding the existing conditions on the project site right now, it's divided into operable units and the landfill. So there's operable unit one, and as Lloyd mentioned, that is under the oversight of DTSC. So DTSC is the lead agency for operable unit one. There's operable unit two, and the water board is the lead agency for operable unit two. The types of constituents of concern that you find in both of those operable, operable units are the same, which are volatile organic compounds. Those would be compounds like the name suggests that volatilize. So that's whether they're in the soil or whether they're in the groundwater, or it could actually be in a vapor phase, which is called soil vapor. So if you think of soil, if you think of an ant farm, and so there's the, there's space between the little grains of sand and an ant farm, and that's called interstitial pore space and that would be where soil vapor is. So you, you basically have different types of these contaminants that volatilize, okay? Metals that are listed, there are some metals that are actually elements. So arsenic, for example, is a naturally occurring element in soil. So when we investigate sites, what we're looking for is what's the concentration of arsenic? Was there historic use at that property that would have contributed concentrations of arsenic that would exceed what we would expect to find in naturally occurring soil in this particular area? Okay? Petroleum hydrocarbons would be things like total petroleum hydrocarbon in the gasoline range, diesel range, oil range, or crude oil range. So TPH refers to carbon chains that are from a compound that only has four carbons to a compound that might have five carbons arranged in a, in a chain. So the landfill is the third piece of the puzzle. And as Lloyd mentioned, it, it is under the regulatory oversight of the water board and San Mateo County as the lead enforcement agency. So the landfill operated before there were regulations and it accepted waste for 35 years. It's classified right now as a Class II landfill, which means that it accepted more than just municipal waste, sanitary waste. So, and, and I, I think the records reflect that. However, because this wasn't a landfill that operated during the times of regulations, we don't have manifests. Right now, if you send something to a landfill, there's a manifest that's, that indicates if it was soil or liquid, why you sent it, what contaminants would be in it, the volume that was sent, and that does not exist for this particular landfill. There is a cover on the landfill. In some places, it's quite deep, over 30 feet of soil's been placed on the landfill. There, they are currently monitoring landfill gas, which would be methane. So as things decompose, they emit methane. And so landfill gas is being collected and, and monitored. And leachate is also being monitored. So again, as things decompose and as they're being compacted, you can get some liquid waste, which would be the leachate, which is being monitored in a leachate collection system. So the landfill will have to be closed per Title 27 standards. So there's been a large volume of assessments and investigations and reports have been written for 30 years. So one of the things that I was asked to do relative to the comments that had been submitted on the draft environmental impact report was to look at some of these or actually all of the reports and make it a determination as to whether or not they were adequate. And, and the reports that were prepared are adequate. They were done with the standard of care and to the standard of practice at, at the time that they were written. They adequately describe the conditions of the property with regard to the potential for the city to look at future land use. So you've heard talk about risk-based cleanup goals, risk assessments. So, risk assessments are structured, look, when you look at the types of the contaminants. And so you've heard me talk about volatiles, you've heard me talk about metals, you've heard me talk about leachate, for example, groundwater. So there are different types of contaminants. So you're going to structure a risk assessment to look at those different types of contaminants and how they could impact receptors, which would actually are the groups of population that you would expect to be using the property. So that's your future intended use of the property. And then you, you want to account for these different populations. So when you are redeveloping property, you would want to look at the potential impact to construction workers, to the intended use of the property, whether it was commercial office, industrial, if there's going to be landscape maintenance workers, if it's going to be residential. And, and when you look at that, it dictates how the risk assessment is performed. And you, you will derive from that risk assessment, these values that indicate whether or not certain contaminants or constituents of concern require remediation, and if so, what the goal would be to clean up to meet that level of land use that's being considered for the property. So there's residential standards and there are commercial standards. Residential standards are standards that are very conservative. So this assumes that an individual is on the property from an infant to the age of 30 for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 350 days a year. It assumes that they are exposed. You heard Ignacio talk about exposure pathways. So this would have to be, you'd be exposed to the soil where you would be touching and consuming soil that had concentrations of metals, for example. You would be breathing air that had concentrations of volatiles if they were volatilizing and coming into the residence in which you were in. And you would be touching. So you have touching inhalation and ingestion of the different types of constituents of concern, the volatiles and the metals, through soil and also through groundwater and total petroleum hydrocarbons as well. For the commercial, you're, you're looking at adults, not children. The exposure is eight hours a day for 250 days a year for 25 years. So that would affect the resultant risk due to exposure to the same constituents because the risk assessment accounts for the weight of the individuals. It accounts for inhalation rate, ingestion rate, how much surface area of your skin is exposed. And so it is conservative when you're looking from a residential perspective and not as conservative when you're looking at a commercial perspective. So we've mentioned DTSC and the water board, and both entities are state of California regulatory agencies. They are staffed with individuals that have degrees and advanced degrees. They would review the risk assessment. Their work would be peer-reviewed by others within the agency. Although OIA isn't up there, you've heard us talk about OIA, also have individuals with the same types of degrees. The last thing I wanted to talk about was long-term liability regarding the site. So liability, environmental liability rests with the property owner of the site. So it, it behooves the individual who is or the entity who's purchasing the site to do their due diligence. And due diligence means looking at the public record, walking the site, noting what, if any environmental work has been done on the site, if any remediation has been done on the site. So not only do you have the developer doing due diligence, you would have lenders doing due diligence. Perspective purchasers should be doing due diligence. In addition to that, the city could, would require a homeowners association similar to Sierra Point so that there could be ongoing monitoring for the project that, that ultimately we would be developed on the property. And then you heard Ignacio mention no further action letters. So at the end of the process, a regulatory agency provides a letter that stipulates whether the, whether the cleanup met the cleanup goals. But there is always a caveat in that letter and the regulatory agency reserves the right to reopen that site if, for example, they find that there is a different element to a constituent that we didn't know about, and then they want to look to see if that element is there or if the land use changes. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Susan.
We're in the homestretch. And I want to walk through the, the policy considerations based on all the, the technical issues that, that you've just heard. In the general plan right now for the City of Brisbane are a series of policies related to remediation of the baylands. And, and basically what the existing policies do is rely on the regulatory agencies for remediation and basically say, we will not, as a community, approve development on the site until the regulatory agencies have completed their process. The requirements you heard about risk assessments, there is a requirement that the risk assessments be done and working closely with the regulatory agencies to encourage that remediation. This was a policy set about 20 years ago, was very forward-looking for the 90s. Remediation was also looked at in the Bayland Sustainability Framework. And that framework sets a more detailed look at what the relationship between city and your land use review and the regulatory agencies ought to be. While the Sustainability Framework recognizes the regulatory authority of Department of Toxic Substances Control and the Regional Water Quality Control Board, the Sustainability Framework also says there, there is a likelihood or there may be differences between what the city believes ought to happen and what the regulatory agencies believe ought to happen. And therefore, what the city should be doing is taking a more active role in the remediation review process than just relying on what the regulatory agencies do with their process between them and the applicant. What the, what the Sustainability Framework says is that the city should be determining its own, on its own independently and then working with the regulatory agencies to apply the highest practical standards for remediation of the site. That the city should engage a third-party technical assistance, a third-party technical expert to review the documents being submitted by the applicant to DTSC, to the regional board, so that the city can provide your comments on what you believe the regulatory agencies ought to be doing, that you would have your own expert reviewing the regulatory agency's response to those submittals by the applicant, and that you, as a community, would require enforceable, ongoing mechanism to support annual testing and reporting, similar to what you've done at Sierra Point. And then if at the end of the regulatory process, you do not agree with what the regulate, with what the regulatory agencies agree, approved, that you would set up a negotiating standards, what the standards ought to be, but have that negotiated in that discussion with the developer and regulatory agencies and not simply say, whatever comes out of that process, we're going to accept. That's what the regulatory framework or the Sustainability Framework sets up, much more active role. And that also comes about with what's called, and I think the technical term is, you would seek to be an interested party and essentially get a seat at the table in all of these discussions so that you can have that participation. So in relation to remediation, what the Planning Commission is recommending is based to a great degree on the Sustainability Framework. And what the Planning Commission, aside from their land use recommendation that we talked about at the workshop last time, Planning Commission is recommending that the city, as part of this remediation process, landfill closure, work with the regulatory agencies to establish those highest practical standards. That you provide input to the regulatory agencies throughout the process through use of a third-party technical expert. You would seek implementation of best practices for waste and site characterization as well as remediation and landfill closure. I mentioned the highest practical standards. You would be reviewing all of the studies, proposed plans, draft approvals, providing input all along the way. And so that there would be a very clear record of the city's view of all of the back and forth that occurred between the applicant, the developer, and the regulatory agency. That in cases of differences, you would seek to negotiate those differences in standards and requirements and performance expectations, and that you would actually set up a system where there was regular testing of the site after remediation, then an annual report coming back to you as the city council saying, this is what's going on out there, but reported to you by your consultants independently of, of the regulatory agencies. And finally, that financial mechanism to support the long-term monitoring. So the other things the Planning Commission is recommending is a basic process. And that process is that you are now looking at a, at a land use decision at a general plan level, concept plan, as well as, there's a level, concept plan, as well as, there's a proposed specific plan in front of you. And what the Planning Commission recommends is that the action that should come out of this is only at the general plan level, the concept plan, so that the city would say, this is what we believe are the appropriate land uses for the baylands. And based on that, the regulatory agencies would do their planning and approvals or whatever, the plans for remediation site Title 27, but that any specific plan would only be reviewed or should be approved by the city only after the remediation plans and landfill closure plans are done. And part of the reason for that is you would establish, here are the general land uses to the regulatory agency to do their planning for. They would then go through their remedial action plan, Title 27 closure plan, and you would then have the opportunity to review a specific plan in relation, not only to consistency with the general plan, but also, you heard about the institutional controls and land use controls. So if, coming out of that review process, there were restrictions on land uses imposed by the regulatory agencies, you would have the opportunity of making sure in the approved specific plan that all of those restrictions, as for example, would say, in this area there shall be no daycare centers, that you would have in your specific plan adopted by the city, no daycare centers in that area, and you would have consistency between specific plan and the remedial action plans, rather than approving a specific plan, getting a remedial action plan, then going back to make sure they're consistent. The other thing, the recommendation of the Planning Commission, is that physical site remediation be completed within OU1 before you actually approve a site-specific development in OU1. So you have that essentially no further action before you're approving a land use, because if it goes on for years, however it's done. But site remediation, OU1, done before any site-specific land use approval there. Same for OU2 and same on the landfill. So that's the basic process, and I'll just quickly summarize it. City would identify appropriate land uses at a general plan level. The applicant would complete plans for landfill closure and Title 27, Title 27 land use closure through remedial action plans. That would include sequel review. That's your place for your participation. When those wraps are approved, as well as the landfill closure, you would then review a specific plan. It would go through its own project sequel review. You would make sure of consistency. After the specific plan is approved, you would then, the applicant would undertake site remediation, the landfill will be closed, then you have site-specific development applications. That's the process the Planning Commission has recommended to you. And so that is not quickly, not shortly, but a very complex set of issues, and we'd be glad to take any questions you have, or if you'd like to open the hearing, whatever is your preference.
All right. Do council members have any questions for Lloyd or Susan or Ignacio?
I do too.
Yeah, well, how about Madison and then you, Clark? Okay.
I have questions that may just be answered by our city staff too, so whoever wants to take it. I have kind of a pile of questions here, so. So first one is, should housing be approved, future responsibility for additional remediation will fall on property owners, and therefore, an HOA will most likely be the organization to address paying for additional costs associated with cleanup? Have there been examples of other developments, not just in the Bay Area, that have faced a situation in which a developer sold the property and further remediation was needed down the line? And if so, how much did the HOA have to pay or what, or who had to pay for that additional cleanup?
Okay, there's.
It's a lot of questions.
There's a lot of questions.
Yeah, it's a lot.
There's a couple underlying assumptions to get to the issue that you've talked about. One is that you have site remediation occurring, two, as approved, it finishes, and then the assumption is that somehow, out of that whole remediation process, a problem still occurs. So I think, as you heard Ignacio say, in the 30 years that Seacler has been involved, you have not seen a situation, except with some very old technologies, that it does get remediated and then problems start occurring. So the likelihood of the first assumption, extremely low, and in case of the technologies we're using today, not likely, because we haven't seen that happen. I think the second part is, deals with issues of, and we had talked about the idea of environmental insurance, and one of the things that there are insurance policies as protecting various parties on down the line. And so we can, in fact, look at, we'll get back to you on that, in terms of, can essentially a homeowners association or a property owners association, I'll try and use property owners because that's not necessarily residential, take, have that kind of insurance as protection? And also, as you heard, in the case of a contamination due to a new contaminant that nobody knew about, or something occurs that was not part of the original remediation, that is one of those instances where it can be reopened. But basically, liability sits with the property owner at the time that goes, and so there's that whole series of due diligence that goes on. And we'll check on the insurance part, because, just not sure how we can get that kind of assurance to you.
And, you know, while in the last 30 years, something, there hasn't been a clear example, and I think it's, it's our responsibility to ask those questions about what if, because if there's anything I know for sure is that Murphy's Law does exist, and, you know, I don't want us to be in that type of position, so it's important for us to really be asking all of those questions, because I want to know what happens if something happens. So, okay. Next question. So, and I don't know if this is more for a different section, so you'll have to let me know, but kind of came up while I was reading, just talk about bedrock and all of that in something that I had been reading. So I think we're all aware of the issues that the Millennium Tower is facing right now, and as I understand it, one of the reasons contributing to its decline has been the failure for the foundation to actually reach the bedrock. Can we ensure that the buildings that UPC wants to build actually hit the bedrock when they, when they lay that foundation?
And depending on which side of the argument you're on up in San Francisco, the tunneling, there's a lot of blame going back and forth. But when buildings would be proposed within Brisbane, there would be engineering studies to show where the pilings go, how far they go, and you would have the opportunity, as the City of Brisbane, with your city engineer and through your building process, to determine how far in that specific location the pilings need to go, because you go through the landfill and you hit bay mud. So how far down do you have to go is an issue that you would get to review as a city.
Okay. And in our packet, UPC had submitted a document to the council urging us to review developments on similar brownfields. So how similar is our former rail yard to Mission Bay in terms of toxins and geological makeup? Is that, that was an example that was put in that document that we should look to compare to what's going on in the baylands?
Yeah, and there was a series of different examples that have been brought up, and we can come back to you with a comparison of various different examples and how similar they are. And I think the other question that you've asked, how well have they held up over time?
Yeah.
And we'd have to look at, not only what were the original levels of contamination, what uses were being proposed, and what were the risk-based cleanup goals and how comparable they were. So we can come back to the council, because we've got a number of hearings yet to go, and get you that information, a series of comparisons, and not just, here's a project where it worked, but what's really comparable.
Okay, awesome. I think that that's really important for us to, like, you, you may not always be comparing apples to apples, right? So it's important to know what the differences are when you are looking at other places and comparing them. So in the presentation, my next question, in the presentation we just had, you did mention that there haven't been any adverse health or environmental impacts on remediated sites. However, is it possible that adverse effects may not appear amongst residents for more than 30 years, let's say, if it's something like cancer? Do you think that that could appear in a population after exposure has occurred for more than 30, more than 30 years, those things might pop up?
Yeah, let me have, I need to throw this right at you, Susan, but you're the right one to answer that one.
So the question is, if you're exposed to something, 60 years later, could you develop cancer?
Or 40, or, the timeframe that was given was, hey, in the last 30 years, we haven't seen anything pop up, but is it possible that something could arise 40 years, and maybe we're just not seeing that in the examples right now that we're looking at, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we won't see that in the future?
Well, anything is possible. So really, what we're, what we're looking at is probabilities, not possibilities, because yes, it is, it is possible, anything's possible. But if you look at it from going back to the exposure, so by the time the remediation is complete on the property, it's possible that soil will be, have removed from the property, that they'll be digging up soil and removing it. So that means that the source is gone. It's more than likely that there will be some sort of vapor control measure, sub-slab, and that means that there is a 10 mil thick layer underneath of the building, underneath of that, anywhere from two to four inches of gravel, in which you have PVC pipe that has slots in it, that's laid horizontally, it's tied into vertical vent risers, and the concept is, any volatile that migrates through soil will go into these pipes and be vented into the, and not be able to enter the house. So that, or commercial dwelling. So that would remove the exposure to volatiles, whether they were in soil or groundwater. So at the, at the end of the development, the exposure potential tends not to be there. Right? You've got paving, you have landscaping, you have buildings.
So in the case that there is a major earthquake and that site is affected, I imagine, because it is landfill, you have the potential for liquefaction and, you know, other risks. Can then that engineered cap or those systems that you have in place to capture those toxins and those pollutants be, be impacted negatively by an event like that?
Well, the landfill is separate from OU1 and OU2.
Right, but still, I mean, there could be office buildings or, you know, something else in that area, and we still would want to know. I want to know everything.
Sure.
All the possibilities, I need to know.
Sure. So, so for the landfill to actually meet the Title 27 requirements for closure, they have to engineer an impermeable cap. Right now, we have soil 30, 35, 40 feet deep in some places that's on that landfill, but it's not engineered, an engineered cap. There's going to be a lot of work that has to be done to make sure that, they're actually going to have to remove some soil and put soil back and recompact it, to make sure that it is totally impermeable. So if there's liquefaction, is there the potential for 40 feet of soil? I mean, the potential is like a possibility. Potentials exist. What's the likelihood of that occurring, where something within the landfill then could be, somebody could be exposed to something that's in the landfill if there was a crack in the cap? I think that the, the likelihood of that is, is low. And when, when risk assessments are performed, they are performed so conservatively to try to account for the unknown or these possibilities or potentials.
Okay.
And just to add, the, an earthquake is an event that would probably be addressed in an institutional control, that any event, they have to go out there, inspect all the caps, all the engineering controls, all the monitoring equipment. So that would be a potential reopener.
Okay. And the last question I have, and, you know, this is probably not something that you guys can answer, but it is something that I think about, even though it is unlikely that somebody may develop cancer due to exposure at the site, because the, the measures taken to protect people are very stringent and, you know, conservative in what they're going to allow people to be exposed to. I wonder, you know, if there ever is, say, a cancer cluster on a particular site, what, how strong does that have to be to then cause further discussion of what may need to continue to be done? I think about, like, if you think, if you look at the baylands, right, and maybe there is a cancer cluster that forms there, I think it would be pretty hard to, to determine whether that's coming from the baylands or maybe jet fuel and other pollution. So I'm wondering, like, how, what, what you have to see in a population to then say, hey, why don't, why don't we look at this deeper? Is it because tests have been done and they have shown that maybe more cleanup needs to be done? Or is it, you're looking at the population and seeing things happen? Like, how, how are, how do discussions come about that maybe there is an issue still and that there, that further remediation or cleanup needs to be done on a site?
Or that there's an issue that may be unrelated that's showing up at that location.
Yeah.
The term you use, a cluster, so a cluster of diseases that would be unusual at the rate it's occurring in a, in a specific geographic area, is, is the kind of thing that would say, that would lead the whole idea of you having an independent review of saying, okay, now we're reporting back to the council, there's, there's an issue out there in terms of this kind of cluster, let's look at, or engage the regulatory agency in looking at what is the cause, because something health-wise is occurring that is not making sense and cannot be explained by random chance. I've seen, that, that occurs in a lot of different areas, and that's usually the precursor to studying, we have a symptom, which is, in the example you're using, a cancer cluster, what is causing it? And you start tracking back, and could it be some of the remediation? Could it be something brand new?
So.
Nothing to do with remediation.
So who brings, like, that forward to the council, or is it a regulatory agency that's keeping track of all of these sorts of things so that they're recognizing when there is an issue? Or is it like a citizen that comes and says, I think that we have an issue here? Like, how, how do we start that conversation?
I'd have to take a look at that, because, I mean, my.
Sorry, I, I didn't know if you could, could answer that, but.
Yeah, I would think the first place it would show up would be at county health, that they're getting unusual clusters of health problems at a particular location. I know in, in some East Coast locations where it, it came up from county health departments, something isn't right here in terms of what they're seeing with, with health cases at a, at a hospital or area hospitals, and they started looking at it. So we'll come back to you with an answer as to what would trigger that kind of look.
Okay, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Lloyd, and Ignacio, and Susan, for your comments. I just have a couple things.
Technically, I think Ignacio had referred to different types of landfill, so, I mean, technically, the rail yard would be considered at least a portion of a landfill also, right? I mean, from destruction debris from 1906 quake, and then I don't, I don't know exactly what else was put in there, but it's also a landfill, and I'm not seeing anything about any type of cap necessarily being put on there.
No, from that standpoint, the, the entire filling of, the creation of the baylands was successive filling of, of the bay. Bay Shore got its name because that was the shore. So, you know, starting with the 19, actually even before that, with the railroad filling in between the, the shorter route on the railroad, filling between the bay shore and the railroad. So the formal landfill, subject to the Title 27 closure, is the municipal landfill on So the formal landfill, subject to the Title 27 closure, is the municipal landfill on the east side of the rail. But you're right, the entirety of the bay was filled over successive time, but under Title 27, the, the former rail yard does not qualify as a, as a landfill.
Okay. I, I had a question of, actually from the, the staff report, and this is on page seven, you're referring to central drainage channel, what is, what is that exactly? And what are you talking about on that?
That's the creek running, right? It's, goes by all sorts of different names and different reports. That's the channel that runs east-west.
Is that, is that one called Guadalupe Channel?
Visitation.
Visitation Channel? Oh, okay.
I guess I got it right, because I'd have heard about it if I got the wrong, yeah, that's the, in, in some cases called the central channel, Visitation Creek, but it's the one, it's east-west splitting the, the landfill.
Right, okay. I kind of thought it was that, but I know there's a name for it and there's different things, and people call it drainage ditch, you know, and different, I get, you know, like what he's talking about here, so, okay, thanks for that clarification. So in regards to the landfill, the municipal dump portion, from what I understand from our city engineer, that all the dirt that's on there right now would have to be removed down to the garbage before, you know, in order to be engineered from a compaction standpoint, of course, you know, depending on what land use is designated as, I'm, I'm sure that is the case. And then, and then at that point, a cap is put on there.
Mm-hmm.
Right, an impermeable cap. Now, is that cap a dependent upon what the land use is? Or, you know, is there different variations of caps, you know?
There, there could be typically, the, the purpose of the cap is to prevent human access to the waste underneath. It also then serves as the base for the land uses that go on top. So there's, there's two issues that would occur, and, and from my standpoint as, as environmental consultant, you're looking, one, at the closure of the landfill, an impermeable layer to prevent water from entering and prevent human contact. The second issue is one that's more of a city issue, which is an engineered fill to support the land uses coming on, on top. So you're going, you're going to have both come into play.
Okay. Now, on a point from Madison had brought up about driving pilings down to bedrock, if pilings are definitely needed to drive down, you know, you know, due to differential settlement or whatever, are those done after the cap's in place or before? How, how does that, what's the methodology?
Yeah.
Or the logistics, I guess?
I can tell you, in, in this case, because of the, the process that we've set up, is the landfill would need to be closed before development would be permitted on top. So in the, in the process that we've set up, whether that occurs everywhere, the pilings would be driven after the cap is put in place.
So it'd be the land use designation first, then?
Then, yeah, then closure plan, closure, then development.
Okay, I see. So it would have to permeate the cap then, if pilings were driven?
Yep.
But I thought the cap was impermeable.
It is impermeable. So part of, part of the, the art of putting the, the piling through it is to get a piling through it in a way that doesn't create gaps between the piling and the impermeable layer. Susan can go through a little, if you want more detail on how that's done, if you.
Sorry to jump on your question.
Oh, that's okay, I'm, I'm curious about how, how it works, you know?
Yeah. If, if you want, we can answer that now, or, okay?
Yeah, I'd like to hear it.
So the, the concept is you create a, a impermeable zone around what you're trying to go through on the outside and what you're going through to put your piling in. So they, they will drive something that is a larger diameter than the piling that they wish to install. So if you think of, if you think of a, like a drainage pipe and you know how big the drainage pipes are that go through the middle of the street, so just think of that, and it's empty in the middle, right? And if you set it this way and you drove it, like pounded it into the ground, then you are, you are separating what's on the outside of it from what eventually will be on the inside of it, which would be your piling, your cement going all the way down to the bedrock, however, they're going to engineer that.
Can I, can I?
Sure.
So, let's say on the landfill, the municipal dump, you have a casing.
Right.
That you're then going to drill out, you pile drive your casing in first.
Right.
And then you have to suck out that debris.
You're going to drill it out.
And then put in some sort of concrete and rebar for your pile.
Right.
That debris that is in the existing municipal landfill.
Right.
When you take that core sample, or the core basically out, we, that debris, we don't know what that is specifically until that starts being pulled out.
Correct.
And at that point, it's, it's my understanding that, you know, we don't know if we're going to hit a refrigerator or toxic medical waste or arsenic puddles or whatever, until that pulls out. And that's after the closure's been done and a remedial action plan's been done and a building permit has been issued. And then all of a sudden, whatever sludge or stuff is coming out of that hole can have a whole new environmental impact.
Well, that's when a soil management plan comes in. So the developer won't move forward on the project until there's a soil management plan that's written by his consultant that would tell the contractor who's doing that work what to do with the, what comes out when they drill down to build the pile, right? So that, you have to characterize that. So when you drill down, you're going to get the slough coming up and for purposes of discussion, let's assume that it's soil. So the soil is then segregated and then it will be tested, because then it will have to be removed from the site as some sort of waste. And so there is protocol for the volume of soil, how many samples you have to take. In this instance, you would have to run a whole series of different analyticals, so you would know how to dispose of that soil. So you can drum it, or you can put it in roll-off bins and you can haul it from the site. Depending upon what's in the soil, the soil can go through thermal treatment, which is basically burning the dirt, and then the dirt can be reused. It could go to another landfill where there would be manifests indicating what landfill it was sent to.
But there, but, but the toxicity of those, the removed material, and I was specifically, I mean, I think it applies to both sites, but the toxicity of whatever material is removed, and, and especially on the municipal side, could have a whole different makeup than soil and have a, need much more toxic cleanup.
It, it comes out as waste. So even if it's, if it's sludge, it, so whatever the material is, it is considered a waste at that point, whether it's soil or it's a waste. And so it has to be characterized and it has to be removed from the site. Those are state regulations. So you are then characterizing a waste for the purposes of appropriate disposal of the waste. And, and it's documented in manifests, the volume would be known, what is in that waste, whether, whether it is sludge, whether it's water, whether it's soil, it would be analyzed for volatile organic compounds, semi-volatile organic compounds, PCBs, PAHs, metals. So that would dictate where it goes.
But, but the, the amount, the debris that is coming out, the waste that is coming out, it's, is indicative of what is in the field in general. And that could change the, whether the remediation that had been done so far on the site, because in theory, it needs to be remediated before you'd even get to that point, that could affect what the remediation was done, was effective, or, or was, let's see, what would be the term you'd use, of the highest practical standards or, or applicable cleanup.
I, I think that's a good question. It wouldn't, because you have an engineered impermeable cap, so again, you have to think in terms of exposure. So there are things, there are constituents in the landfill that would not, that regardless of the end use, maybe it's a park, maybe it's, it's a driving range. So the, there's no exposure pathway for those constituents that would affect an individual. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Susan, for that explanation. Ignacio had made a comment, and Lloyd, you might be able to answer this, about different degrees of mitigation between commercial and, and residential. And what if it's commercial, residential, you know, like apartments, is, is there, is that commercial or is that residential?
Residential.
Residential.
Yeah. And, and what it would look at, because all of this is about eliminating the, the potential for the waste or the contamination to enter the environment or for people to come in contact with it. So going back a step in the case of the landfill, the people on top would not have exposure to what's in it, what's in the landfill, but the question you raise is, based on what's found when that core comes out, you could certainly ask the question, are the collection systems that are set up for methane and leachate adequate to deal with whatever you find in that core not entering the environment? So there, there's two issues. So we're trying to prevent exposure of, in the case that you, you have, you've got the various populations potentially exposed, the residential population and the workers in the buildings, and in that case, if you have both, the residential population would govern the standards because the exposure levels are so much higher, that's what the standard would be based on.
Okay. Thank you. Just, actually, one more, this is a, more of a clarification, because I had a phone call today, somebody's asked me specifically about the landfill, saying, well, geez, that was unrestricted dumping for, you know, they use the term 60 years, but it wasn't that long. Said that included, everything, including hospital waste and stuff, and I said, yeah, probably, and said, they said, well, you know, they started experimenting with nuclear in the 50s and the 60s and, I don't know, you know, I mean, was there any testing done for nuclear waste out there?
There's been a number, and, and I can't specifically what they were looking for, but a number of core samples taken throughout, and the responsibility of county health and the regional board is twofold in terms of the landfill closure, or a couple of different things. One, no exposure of people in any future use on top of the landfill to the waste. And then the waste inside the landfill, not flowing out of the landfill into the environment, into the groundwater, based on a leachate collection system, and as things decompose inside the landfill and methane coming out, that that not just vent out into the world, that that is, is captured. So those are the various things, and that's why, if every, if there is nothing escaping from the landfill and it's not exposed to, and the public is not exposed to it, the environment is not exposed to it, it's contained, that's the, the way the system is set up to contain those.
But there's no, been no testing, I mean, there's been testing for specific items, you know, like a, like an OU1, OU2, I mean, I know Pacific Lithograph was there that, you know, that used a lot of solvents, and that's where a lot of the TCE and vinyl chloride and stuff like that, and those are high carcinogens came from. You know, it wasn't necessarily, maybe some of it came from Schlaglocks, you know, I, I know they used some solvents too, but good majority of it came from Pacific Lithograph, which the building has been torn down since, so that really wasn't acknowledged in the, in the staff report, but you know that.
Right.
The components are there. And so we've tested for those, which are more VOCs, I guess, and, you know, it's indicated, the bunker sea oil, the hydrocarbons and, you know, stuff like that. But was there any specific test for any type of nuclear waste?
I'd have to get back to you on that, because there've been a series of tests, but.
Yeah, I'm not seeing.
I can check on that, we can get back to you.
Okay, all right, that'd be great.
All right?
Great, thank you. Thank you all for your presentations. So Ignacio had mentioned 30 years as the, the marker for how long, I guess you've all looked at these types of projects, why 30 years, why not longer?
That's, that, that's how long he's been, been doing this.
Okay.
It's, it's the 30 years that Seacler has, has been reviewing this, so that was the reason for, for the 30 years.
So are you, are any of you aware of any remediation projects where the work was done and then there were environmental health risks, risks that came about?
I, I've been working on brownfield projects for just about 20 years, and I am not aware of any health risks after the development has been completed on a brownfield project.
Okay. Okay, great. And then, you want to add to that? Oh, you're back, okay. So you were saying that the, the residential standard is the highest. So if there were land use designations and then it went to the regulatory agencies, and what, what's your perspective on, you know, what level of risk assessment should be done for the site in general? Should they be saying, well, on this portion, you should look at residential, on this portion, you should look at commercial? Because it seems like at this point, you know, they may not know, and the developer may not know exactly where on the site the uses will be. So is there an advantage to just having it all look at residential so that we know, you know, what the, what the risk assessment is for the highest level of cleanup that would be required?
And it's, it's kind of, it's a little bit of an iterative process, so the application of that highest, as, as Ignacio referred to it, the unrestricted use standard, that cleanup to that standard, any use could go or would be appropriate with that level, really depends on what portions of the site would ultimately be used for, for residential and where would there be restrictions on the site against residential use. So you could theoretically say, probably not on the landfill, but anywhere in OU2, you could look at residential use, but do you really want to theoretically propose the whole area? But ultimately, what, what would come out of that process, even if you looked at that higher standard, is the areas where, based on your land use plan, the developer's, what he's going to come back with a specific plan later, would be the areas where they proposed residential use, would be the areas that would be to a residential standard and areas that would be, where the developer would be proposing solely non-residential use would be to a commercial standard. So even if you would say, we ought to go in saying it's all residential to see how it goes, I think through that process, there's going to be shaking out, these are areas where land, where residential might be appropriate, these are areas that it's not. And, and in the review of appropriate uses throughout the site, you've got the Bay Shore Station at the northwest portion of the site, and if you were considering residential use anywhere within the, the Baylands, the most appropriate location would be up around the Bay Shore Station, because if people were living there, you'd generally want them to be within a walking distance of the Bay Shore Station, rather than having them isolated from, from transit in the more southerly portions of the site.
The OU1 area?
OU1 area would be the more likely.
And what are the risk assessment levels for uses where there are, you know, schools, daycares, hospitals? What are the standards there? How does that fall in the?
Similar residential standards, and it looks at, as you get into those, you've got vulnerable populations. The basic difference on the residential side is a much longer exposure period in terms of 30 years, as opposed to 25. 350 days a year, 24 hours a day versus shorter periods of time. So where you have uses that are hospitals, they would tend to be more towards the commercial side, because people are not living there, and theoretically, even though people don't spend all that much time in their house, the actual residential use is treated with that much longer period.
Okay. And one more question, and perhaps this is for Susan. So you looked at the adequacy of, or the adequacy of the description of the contamination that's out there in all the sites, and I understand that OU1, a portion of OU1 is in San Francisco, where the Schleigelock facility is, and that they've done an environmental assessment for that site in 2009. So do you have an opinion on whether that environmental assessment is adequate for the rest of the OU1 that is in the Brisbane baylands? Okay.
A risk assessment is data-driven, so you're crunching numbers with different algorithms. And one of the things that you want to consider is the potential future land use, and if you don't know what the potential future land use is, then the default tends to be residential. So the risk assessments that I prepare, I look at residential in addition to commercial, in addition to construction workers and landscape maintenance workers, because I want to cover all of the potentials. And if a risk assessment is only done to commercial standards, then the regulatory agency will insist upon a land use control restriction, could be a deed restriction that's attached to the property. A lot of times, developers don't like that, because they feel that it devalues the property. So when you're looking at the portion of the property that falls within the city of Brisbane, I think that one of the things that you would want to consider is that the risk assessment includes a residential scenario regardless of the end use, because I don't think that you really know right now what the end use is. And the residential scenario will give you conservative cleanup goals, which will help make decisions regarding what would be the most appropriate use of the land throughout that. So even though there was a risk assessment done for the San Francisco portion of OU1, it was performed in 2009, and that was seven years ago, so it is very reasonable to request that a risk assessment be done to residential standards, not only for OU1, but for the remaining property. And it can include the other scenarios as well. I mean, it's literally crunching numbers.
Okay. And how was, if you're familiar with how San Francisco handled it, how did they deal with having a commercial risk assessment for something that they've, they're moving forward with residential, I understand. So what mechanisms did they use?
They instituted the institutional controls that Ignacio has talked about. So the, I wasn't part of that process, but if you look at the proposed development, it's the podium style housing. So they are looking at minimizing the exposure, and using the cleanup criteria from the risk assessment that was looking at commercial land use. They evaluated open park space, and then commercial, knowing that there was the potential for podium style housing. And that was acceptable to the regulatory agency.
Okay. Thank you.
Podium, is that what?
Yeah, you know, I've also heard it referred to as tuck under. So you have parking, so you, usually, it's not garage, it's, they pull into the parking, and then you have apartments above it, or houses above it. So that would be considered podium, or tuck under.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Terry? Not quite sure where to direct this, but on the landfill, the municipal waste portion of the property, what triggers the landowner's requirement to do a Title 27 closure? And do they have any responsibility to do it at all if it's not economically desirable for them? Is there any reason that they would have to do Title 27 closure ever if they don't develop?
It's the change of land use that triggers the need for that closure. I think in the case of never developing anything else, leaving the existing land use, the answer would be, yeah, why don't you take that one?
Yes, the law is clear that the LEA has various ways of getting sites into the
LEA, please?
A local enforcement agency. So a citizen can report it, they can, their inspectors can see it, and that actually, they go through a whole process to get a site into that closure process. So if it's a landfill, it can, there are different ways of the enforcement agency of knowing about it and getting it into the system.
So, I mean, obviously, our local enforcement agency knows about the landfill, but, so an issuance of a change of use, a permit to do a different use should trigger Title 27?
And those are two different things, really. The change of land use, that's apart from the actual closure. Eventually, it would have to be closed. So a landfill is either operating, or it ceases operating and has to be closed. So even if there is nothing ever going to happen on that site, eventually, it would have to go through the closure process. The change in land use will trigger something else, and would get the other...
But we, we talk about eventually, and this has been 50 years, that it's been non-operational, and nothing has triggered closure yet.
Why don't we just, I think the best answer is, we'll check with the county health, who is the one to enforce this, and the question for them is, what would trigger their requirement for that closure?
Okay.
So Lloyd, if I could, Terry, just to clarify, local enforcement agency is the county, not the city?
It's the county health department.
Right.
They are the local agency acting for CalRecycle in terms of the state's requirement to regulate the operation of a landfill.
Okay.
So in this case, CalRecycle at the state has authorized county health department to regulate on behalf of the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And then on, some of my other questions sort of revolve around what the answer to that is, and what land uses may trigger the Title 27, or permitted use, or permitting issues. And I think that's something I can get together with staff on for the next time we meet. But in our staff report on the planning commission report, on page 130, it's talking about OU1 and OU2, and when the studies were done, and whether they are considered current, and good enough for what our process is going here. And the study for OU1 was done 20 years ago. The study for OU2 was 30 years ago. And then also, on page 131, it states that there was a conditional approval letter dated 2002 from the Regional Water Quality Board to, for a contamination mitigation plan. And, but it was never implemented, the property owner never went ahead with doing the proposed cleanup. And I'd like to see a copy of that May 2002 plan, and ask the consultant whether she's very comfortable with studies that were done 20 and 30 years ago, and whether they are really done to today's standards.
Okay. And we can make sure of that 2002 study. Remember that the review that CDM did in 2005, again, in 2013, and that Dr. Burns did last year, was based on looking at those studies, one, were they done in the appropriate standard, the time they were done, but the adequacy of the characterization, and what we know of the characterization for your land use decision. We have not made either CDM Smith or Dr. Burns any recommendation, or any determination that those are adequate to support a health risk assessment or remedial action plan. So it's really looking at, do we know enough to say that there's a land use decision that can be made that would start that RAP process? The answer we've said is yes. Is there adequate information and no gaps to actually prepare a RAP? That is a determination to be made by DTSC and the regional board.
But doesn't the fact that we deem the environmental impact report, if we deem it adequate, isn't that implying that the information contained in it, and the studies done 20 and 30 years ago, are adequate under our impressions and our consultants?
It implies that the studies and what we know of contamination, OU1 and OU2, is adequate for a general plan level land use decision, and it implies nothing more beyond that.
Okay. And then also, on page 130, the last sentence, talking about the hydrocarbons and heavy metals within OU2, the southern portion, is thought to have originated from the oil tank operations. And I know that in the Regional Water Quality Board presentation that I heard at the baylands subcommittee group for the BB-CAG, and I hate to use acronyms, but that was certainly heavily disputed by the folks from Kinder Morgan, that they have anything to do with the plume that's coming across there.
Right. And so there's a lot of controversy about where it came from. And then here's the difference between knowing, characterization for the purpose of a land use decision versus characterization for the purpose of remediation. We know what's there. And so from a land use decision, we know that there is remediation that needs to be done of that contaminant in order to, and that is adequate for a land use decision. However, in order to actually prepare a RAP, you have to know not only what's there, but where it came from. And so the resolution of, did it come from Kinder Morgan, and if not from Kinder Morgan, where did it come from? Because that will govern the appropriate method of remediation, and that's the difference between level of land use and remediation. So that's why we're saying, we're not making any determination regarding adequacy for a remedial action plan.
But we are for the impact report. And then on page 141, we talk about the current, the FEMA maps for the flood control maps, that are in our environmental, our final EIR. And do we have a more current flood map that we can have updated from the 2013?
We don't have that as part of the final EIR, the 2013 FEMA maps, as well as looking at a 100-year flood, also considering 50 years of sea level rise.
But there is a newer flood control map that's out from FEMA, isn't there?
I'll confirm that it's the most recent one, because there was, at the time of the final EIR, there was a more recent one that was available at the time of the draft.
Okay, because I think, and I could be wrong, that there is a more current one that I think that we should have available to us, and have it, you know, referenced in the document for the more current map.
Correct. And if one comes out between now and the time that there's a final EIR, we'll include the...
I think one came out last year. But I could be wrong.
I'll check, and we'll make sure.
And I think the other question I had, and it's something that, when we talk about the methane collection system and the leachate system under the municipal dump, is it possible that within the methane that is off-gassing from the organic material that is decomposing, can other toxins, constituents be in and transported through the methane? And wouldn't that make a big difference, what barriers, when we permeate that with any possible development or driving into that material, change what the VOCs, what the methane has in it, and what the toxicity level could be?
Yeah, I'll ask Susan to follow up, but the other part of that is, if what's coming through the methane collection system is not all methane, then that speaks to looking at the adequacy of the existing system, and is that really catching all of what needs to be done? And I can have Susan follow up on that answer.
And one final question.
Then I'll have her.
I will do one more question, and it's probably something she can answer. And my, one of my concerns about the landfill and the closure process is, it wasn't lined, and it doesn't have a barrier between the bay, or it, we don't know, I don't know what the barrier is between the bay and the landfill itself, and what kind of permeable solution they would have to keep any toxins from going out, or being impacted with sea water, to change their characteristics, because that can change the characteristics of the toxins. And when they, sort of like a bagel, and you put your cream cheese in the middle, and then you squish it down, and stuff comes out the sides, I'm wondering what the compaction of the garbage in there can do to the edges of that containment, and how that could be addressed with the site we have.
Okay. Great. I'll have her respond.
Bagel, huh? So the first question was with regard to the methane and the landfill gas collection system. So there are volatiles, including methane, that will be off-gassing from the landfill, they'll all be captured by the landfill gas collection system. Does that answer your question?
And then just burned off?
Yep.
And burning off gets rid of any other volatiles that, and renders them inert?
Yes, and it doesn't render them inert, it combusts them so that they would no longer be there. Like with methane, when it's combusted, it's no longer there. The thing to consider when you're thinking of volatiles, is if we're standing right now, for example, if we were, if this building was built on top of the landfill, then volatiles, and assuming there was no landfill gas collection and assuming there was no landfill gas collection system, no impermeable cap. So volatiles could potentially migrate through soil and migrate up into the building. And so then they would accumulate in the building, even with an HVAC system. However, if this was a playing field, if this was open, as it currently is, there's no building on it, when volatiles migrate up and out, they dissipate. So even from a risk assessment perspective, when you look at the potential remediation for volatiles, you want to put a house, even if it's ridiculous, on the area that you're looking to remediate, because that would drive the remediation. Do you understand what I'm saying? So the volatiles come up into a house and have the potential to have an impact, because they're contained within a structure that's habitable. Whereas volatiles come up in a field, they will dissipate. If you think about cigarette smoke, when people would smoke, and they used to be relegated to the back of the plane, and if you sat in the front of the plane, you could smell that smoke, because you were in a confined space, where it would be less noticeable if they were in a park, at a park bench, because that dissipates. So regarding the landfill, the volatiles that would be migrating upwards through the landfill are dissipating into the ambient atmosphere, as is methane, unless it's captured in a landfill gas collection system.
They're diluted. I understand the process of dilution.
Okay. So then the second question you had, I'm sorry, you'll have to refresh my memory.
The edges, I believe, of the landfill.
Right. So the landfill wasn't designed for, based on current standards. So you have materials in the landfill. Based on the literature, it appears that there are inert materials that are placed on the bay muds prior to the refuse, which may contain other constituents besides just municipal waste. So the bay muds themselves are muds, they're clay, and that's relatively impermeable as well. So the materials within the landfill, we're trying to mitigate something that wasn't designed based on what we know about landfills, to the best of the ability of any remedial contractor and the knowledge of regulators and consultants that do this. And that comes back to trying to remediate the volatiles and the leachate. Is it possible to drive steel piling down on one side? Sure. Right? But then is that feasible? Or would that create additional problems? So the issue comes back to trying to address risk so that it becomes reasonable and that the remedial strategy is feasible, so that there is remediation that occurs.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. I have a few questions, and then we'll open it up. I'm going to go through my packet here. A lot of the questions are already asked. So on page four, under the OU one, second paragraph at the bottom, so it talks about the groundwater remediation currently underway for Sledge Lock. And so can you, since that project is, has been approved by the City of San Francisco, that means that there's a remediation plan. And so what is, what process has been used to remediate that site in regards to groundwater?
See, I let Susan sit down, and I came up, and I got to get her back up here for that one.
Okay. No problem.
So they've used enhanced reduction degradation process. There's chlorinated solvents in the groundwater, and so they're adding oxygen and they're adding other things that will enhance the microbes' ability to degrade the contaminants in the groundwater.
Okay. And are they doing any removal, or has that ever occurred? Isn't there like pump and treat?
Pump and treat is a remedial technology that can be used. My understanding after reading the material is that they went with ARD because of the volume of the constituents that were in the groundwater, and it was very effective, because the concentrations of the chlorinated solvents were so high.
Okay. All right. And that will be an ongoing remediation technique?
Eventually, a regulatory agency will make a decision that it's diminishing returns, that that groundwater is as clean as it can be clean. And that's true, even if you do pump and treat, or the, as Ignacio had said, it's impossible to clean up to pristine standards. It's impossible to clean up to zero or to non-detect. And that, when I started as an environmental consultant thirty years ago, we assessed and investigated to death, because we couldn't figure out how to remediate something in a cost-effective manner. And that's really how risk assessment started, because this is scientifically defensible, and it allows for projects to be developed on brownfield sites or previously contaminated sites. So there comes a point in time when the remedial strategy or technology hits a point of diminishing returns, and that even if a cleanup goal was set, you might not be able to attain it in groundwater, for example. And therefore, there's going to be a decision made by the regulatory agency that groundwater's been, they've tried this technology for ten years, and this is what they've got. You could continue to monitor it. You could have a plan in place, so that if the concentration increased over time, that it would trigger something. A lot of the constituents of concern that we address, microbes that exist in the environment, will consume them, because they are after the energy sources, which are carbons. And it just takes time. Usually, the rate limiting steps for microbes are oxygen and warmth, and hence the enhanced reduction degradation, where they were adding oxygen into the groundwater to stimulate the microbial degradation.
Mr. Mayor, Susan, you use the acronym ARD or ER?
E R D.
Wait, what?
Enhanced Reduction Degradation.
E R D. Okay.
So Lloyd, and I know you already talked about this, you know, that the city maintains the land use authority, but the city does not have the authority in regards to remediating the site, right? In regards to how the site should be remediated, that goes to the regulatory agencies. But the city can play a role, you know, having its peer review be a part of the process. And I just wanted, I know you touched upon that, and if you could just talk about that a little bit more?
Sure.
And the importance of that?
Sure. Because while you have land use authorities, you start, this remediation process starts with, these are the land uses for which we're remediating. It doesn't, you know, you could let it be a black box and say, okay, you know, when the agencies come back with a remediation plan that's approved, then development goes on. What's being recommended by the Planning Commission is that the city identify itself to the agencies and request to be identified as a, as an interested party. Essentially, you get a seat at the table, and you're there as part of this review process. You get a chance to look at the documents that are being submitted to the regulatory agencies, the documents coming back from the regulatory agencies, and that gives you the opportunity to comment on applicant's submittals to the regulatory agencies, using your own independent consultant. Then you can say, we believe this document is adequate, or we believe it's not for these reasons. And you create a city record of your view of the regulatory process as it goes on. That could include, as Susan had done when she was in the position of that third-party reviewer for a city down south, in Burbank, on a Lockheed project, looking at the constituents of concern that were going to be analyzed and saying, wait a minute, you're missing this one. And as the city's reviewer, she made that comment, and an additional constituent was analyzed as part of the review. So that's the opportunity you have as a city of having that seat at the table, and that is what, the kind of input that the city's sustainability framework is contemplating, not just, it goes off to the regulatory agency, but that you're participating all along the way. And if the developer and the agency start heading towards a solution that you are not in agreement with, that your own consultant's telling you this isn't quite going to work, that's where you become part of the negotiations of, how does this really work? Does this really work? And ultimately, are we willing to approve a specific plan after this is done with that kind of arrangement? That's the, you have the land use authority, and you have the discretion of approvals at the general plan level, and then ultimately, not ultimately, but after this process, at the specific plan level, in terms of what uses are you willing to approve?
But if, as a, we've made, say we've made changes to the general plan to approve a use on the land, and the regulatory agencies say that this is cleaned up as best as we can do for that use, and so we're signing off on, we think this is good enough, how could we, as the city, say, well, we don't think that's good enough, so we're not going to give you the use that we've already changed and given you an approval for? How could we?
Well, this is very hypothetical, we have to say.
Of course. It's all hypothetical.
Because you would have, and that's the reason for your participation in the process. It would be very difficult if you sat back, let the process go on, and then it comes out, and the regulatory agency says, well, here's the cleanup plan, and the city says, we never participated, we never said anything, we don't like it, we're not approving the land use you just did this for. As opposed to if you have had that seat at the table and commented each step of the way.
And we still don't like it.
And you still don't like it. Your record is very clear as to what you don't like, why you don't like it, and then it becomes a question for the city attorney. Do you have adequate record at that point? And again, we're talking theoretically, do you have adequate record not to approve a land use you think is unsafe, for all the reasons that you had identified during that process?
And that's why it's important to have that seat at the table, because now you've established a record
Right.
of what your position is, in regards to how a particular contaminant would be mitigated.
Right. And part of the hypothetical is...
And tied to that use.
Yeah. You're using your seat at the table, we'd hear this from the developer, that you're using your seat at the table in a responsible way, your comments are appropriate, as opposed to, you know, we don't care what anybody says, we want this done. So it's all a matter, but that was that concept in the sustainability framework of, how do we deal with the difference? It's negotiated. And it's negotiated with, developer wants something, review, you want something, and how does it all fit together? And through that process, you'd have your technical consultant to support you in what is a reasonable set of comments, what is reasonably going on, what can you ask for, what makes sense to ask for, where are any holes that they see in the process? On the other side, you would have your city attorney advising you through that entire process, in terms of, are we on solid ground, are we on shaky ground? And you could actually say, in your general plan upfront, we would, on the theoretical land use, we would agree to this land use under these circumstances. And then, so you aren't just relying on the process at the end. You would look at a specific plan that comes back, does it meet the circumstances we laid out in the general plan? Is there requirements for whatever land uses we'd be talking about later?
Okay. And then, you know, one of the big concerns is monitoring, and, you know, for, in perpetuity for the site, and establishing, you know, proper mechanisms and the financing of that. We do that out at Sierra Point. So just kind of, just bring that back into clarity?
Correct. Yeah. You have a system that you've been using at Sierra Point for however many years, and part of this process, and again, the sustainability framework says, one of those circumstances we would want to see as a community is financial arrangements for ongoing monitoring, review reports back to the city council, funded by the uses on site, similar manner to what you're doing at Sierra Point. But, and in fact, you got a letter from San Mateo Health System regarding the landfill about that very kind of monitoring for the landfill, which is exactly what you're doing at Sierra Point right now.
And then having those financial mechanisms in place to identify who's responsible, and in case someone does leave, there's a way to continue to fund for that monitoring.
Right. And you would look at, as part of setting up that financial mechanism and part of this whole process, what are systems that could be in place to, as you've asked, to protect future users of the site if something goes wrong? How do we deal with that? What is a financial mechanism to deal with unknowns today that become knowns later? And that's something else that your expert can help you with through that review process, as well as your city attorney, your finance director, city manager. You build those protections along the process, and rather than just relying on, we'll take whatever outcome comes out of that review.
Sure. Absolutely. You know, we talked about the, you know, the different rates of exposure for residential, for commercial. What about some of the other types of uses, say, recreation, open space?
They'll fall into the same two classifications.
So there's just the two?
Yeah. They'll fall into that unrestricted use standard or to the commercial standard, which is a series of restrictions, a list of, these uses would not be permitted based on that review standard. So you saw the slide we had earlier, it's a different exposure rate and different risk of adverse health effect, but there would be, for the uses that people are not on-site long periods of time, over many, many years, that would go to the commercial standard.
Okay. All right. So if there was an area that was open space, it would be mitigated to the same standards as the site that would have the office building? Is that good, Susan? No?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay.
So I mentioned that risk assessment process is number crunching, and their algorithms. And so one of the things that you look at is how many years is your potential receptor population exposed to? So for example, a construction worker, the assumption is they're going to be exposed for two years. But, and that's conservative, because an electrician is there not for two solid years, right? So if you looked at open space, and you're looking at a park user, and so then, I've been involved in risk assessments, where they actually ask the community members, how many hours do you spend at the park? Or if it's a park that's affiliated with a school, or with a youth soccer league, so that you have site-specific information that you can put in, so that you know how many hours, and children are the receptor population that drives the cleanup. They are the ones... They are the ones that have the potential to be harmed the most by exposure to constituents. So then you look at the hours of exposure and the length of time. The way the regulations look at a child, it's really from the age of zero to six, and then from seven to, to 30, basically, they're evaluated more as an adult, not as a child. So you would input that information that was specific to the end use that was being considered, and you could come up with a cleanup goal that was very specific to open space. Okay?
Okay. No, thank you. All right. And Susan, so in regards to, you know, and you talked about the, you know, how you would come up with the, the threshold housing, a residential scenario. So it's that, that exposure, 350 days per year over 30 years, and that's, you said that it was, it would be, you know, quite a bit of exposure, not just, say, being in a, in a building, but actually touching, or--
Ingesting the soil.
I mean--
Yep.
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours a day.
A day.
Seven days a week.
So I mean, like, that, that standard, I mean, of course, is ridiculous, because no one would be doing that, but that's how it is rated.
Correct.
Okay. And then, and then in regards to commercial, you know, it's got the 250 days a year for 25 years, but that's only at eight hours.
Correct. So the assumption is it's an adult that is consuming or touching the soil for eight hours a day, 250 days a year, 25 years.
Okay. All right.
A seven-year-old.
Well, it, for the residential scenario, you know, they look at, when they talk about it, it comes down to the weight. So a child obviously weighs less than an adult. They have a higher inhalation rate, there's consideration that they have greater surface area that's exposed to the soil than an adult, because children play in the dirt, and adults tend not to. So those, those variables are set by the regulatory agencies. And then you put those into the algorithm from zero to 30. So you're evaluating an infant as they grow up for 30 years on this site. And the assumption is that they are eating the soil and touching the soil, inhaling everything, and they're sort of doing it simultaneously on the entire property where the greatest concentrations of the multiple different constituents that you're looking at, evaluating, so that they are exposed to everything simultaneously.
Okay. And then in regards to the Title 27 landfill closure, and on page 14, there was a typo.
Yep.
Yeah. So it says, Title 27 landfill closure plans are designed to protect future uses within a former landfill. And we kind of talked about that, and I'm just a little confused and just trying to get some clarity in regards to, so, you know, you do the remediation of the other side based upon the use. So here with the Title 27 closure, would that closure then cover all uses? Is it, is it like a one-size-fits-all type thing? You just have to do it that way?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Most people don't put houses on landfill.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, no one's, you know, you know, putting that forward.
Right.
Yeah, no one is, would ever ask for that.
Right.
But I'm just, you know, I'm talking about the, the site being cleaned up, you know, and the level, the risk assessment.
Right. So again, it comes back to exposure. Is there a pathway whereby you, anybody can be exposed to whatever is in the landfill? And so if it's a metal, a metal doesn't volatilize. So you would physically have to be touching the metal or ingesting the metal. If it's total petroleum hydrocarbons, the carbon chains don't volatilize. There are, of, of the refined product, there are constituents that volatilize. So really, from the landfill perspective, you are looking at the volatiles, because that can migrate upwards and have an impact. So that's why you have the engineered impermeable layer, why you have the landfill gas collection system. So you are accounting for those volatiles, and you're accounting for methane, which has--
And the leachate as well.
Yes. Well, and then you have the leachate to make sure that you're not getting anything migrating off, potentially impacting groundwater or surface water in this instance as well. So, so you are, the remediation mitigates the potential for a person to be exposed to what could come out of the landfill. That's the objective.
Sure. All right.
Okay.
And then, you know, just looking at some of the general plan policies, and, you know, the current general plan really is relying on these agencies to, to oversee and make sure that everything is okay.
Mm-hmm.
You know, obviously, we need to, to update the general plan to, to make sure that the, the community is, you know, having a say in what eventually is acceptable to them. So, you know, like Program 175B, it says, required evidence that scientific testing and verification is taking place to the satisfaction of regulatory agencies. So it's, it's really saying, you know, if the agency is okay, then we're okay, in a sense, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And so, yeah, no, that's, that's alarming. Let's see. Yeah, I'm, I'm glad that we have strong language in our sustainability framework in regards to, you know, looking at the highest practical standard, and having permanent monitoring, and, you know, having third-party testing. I mean, that is just so key to making sure that whatever we decide to first incorporate into the general plan, and then, you know, later on down the line, approving a, a specific plan. You know, I wanted to, you know, talk to you about that 2009 risk assessment. So, so you have OU1, and it's, so there's a sharing of, of the OU1 site between San Francisco and, and Brisbane. So there's this assessment, and we have a commercial recommendation, yet housing occurs. But there are restrictions to that site. And, and so things like a hospital, or daycare, or school. Now, hospital would be a commercial, but the daycare and the, and the, daycare and--
School.
School. You know, those would be at the high, that, the same standards as residential, correct?
Close, but not, yeah, close.
Okay. Tougher than commercial.
Yes, because you're talking about children.
Okay. So those, those, so, you know, I know that you're, are, you know, peer review, you know, you're representing the city.
Mm-hmm.
Can, can children live at the Schlegel Lock housing site? I mean--
Oh, from a residential perspective?
Yeah.
Well, they have the institutional controls in place. So they have the podium-style housing, and that would be to prohibit exposure. An exposure pathway would be soil, hand-to-mouth, or, so that is the way that the San Francisco DTSC thought was appropriate for remediation of that particular portion of OU1.
Okay. And, you know, we've talked about, you know, having that seat at the table, and, I mean, I'm, I'm making an assumption here, but it just seems like San Francisco really wasn't at the table to ensure that the residential standards applied to this site.
I, I, I can't speak to what was motivating the city of San Francisco. I don't know if this was occurring during the time of redevelopment agencies, and there was an impetus to remediate and to redevelop the property. Or that they are wholly comfortable with institutional controls, serving as, as a mechanism that prevents exposure, coupled with the land use covenant restrictions, which were quite lengthy.
Sure. All right. So we have this 2009 risk assessment, but you would recommend doing an updated one in 2016?
Yes.
Risk assessment for OU1?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Can I ask one quick question here? On, on the Schleg site, I know that we had a BB-CAG meeting, and, and part of what's going on there has come up. And, and they're talking about changing a use at one of the buildings to a more sensitive use that includes a daycare center, and so they're having to do some more testing mid-stream. So what you're saying, there's two levels, an industrial cleanup level, and then a residential cleanup level. But you can take an industrial cleanup level and allow residential, if you put other methods, to make it less risky. And then where does the sensitive use, like a daycare, fit in between the residential and the industrial and the environmental controls?
Right. So the daycare would be without, without institutional controls, the, the daycare would fit more in line with residential. The difference would come in the number of hours that are spent there, the assumption is that it's not 24 hours a day. You would still have the seven days a week, you would still have the 300--
But it wouldn't be as cleaned up as residential for a daycare center?
Correct. But it would be a, more conservative than commercial.
So it's a mid, mid-zone?
Yep.
And then also, one of the things that came up with the Schleg Lock discussions was that the adjacent property, which was also potentially contaminated, but is a different owner, does not need to be looked at, even though it is the adjacent property, you know, with a shared boundary, and does not need to be cleaned up because it's a separate owner. And that use is, is sort of like there's a line in the sand, and that those contaminants don't need to be addressed, because it's a separate property.
So are, are you concerned that those constituents are migrating onto the portion that--
Well, it's just an adjacent use, so if there's, they were talking about, and, and this doesn't really have anything to do with our site, but they were talking about for a daycare, did they need area around it for playgrounds or, or parks, and how that would affect it? And then it, it was, you know, brought up that the adjacent property was purchased by a different property owner, and so it doesn't play any part in their toxins or discussions, just because it happens to be right next to a now-proposed, you know, or possible daycare center, if they can get approval. So, you know, I, I just--
Right. So if I was the consultant for that developer, I would suggest actually doing, in historic search of what's been done on the adjacent contiguous property. Because you would want to know what constituents are there, what the concentrations are that are residual, if any remediation has occurred, because, you know, the groundwater under the OU1 portion that's in the city of San Francisco does not stop at the property boundary for Brisbane. So, and that's the same for soil gas or volatiles.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. You know, since this is the, the first public hearing, before we open up to the public, if the applicant would like to speak, introduce his staff, or--
Mr. Mayor, we, we are pretty late in the hour, so I, I, I'm not sure we're going to make it through this, you know, for sure, we're not going to make it by 10:30. So I know we'll have to schedule another meeting to finish this, so just--
Yes, no, I, I hear it. So, you're good? You want to come on up? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Jonathan Shurfman with UPC. And just a couple of brief comments. We, we have submitted some case studies for your consideration that address properties directly adjacent to the Brisbane Baylands that have, have been looked at by the same regulatory agencies that are responsible for the oversight of the Brisbane Bayland site. That is Schleg Lock, it's, it's been, it's been discussed. And also in, in, in Sierra Point, where there's a long history of, of development on a former sanitary landfill. So there's, there's some, some good information there. But what, what we have for, for either questions that counsel has tonight, or in a subsequent meeting, or perhaps in a form of a letter request, or a subcommittee forum, we do, we do have our consultants here who have worked on both of those projects for, for many, many years. I, I have from BKF engineers, Principal Todd Adair, civil engineer, whose, whose firm has done many, many of the mitigations for construction of buildings out at Sierra Point over the years, including methane mitigation and civil engineering to, to address differential settlements, so can answer some practical questions along those lines. And Mr. Tom Graff from GraffCon, who has, is also an engineer that has been involved from the beginning with our company as an interface with the DTSC, particularly on the risk assessments, and some of the, the practical level of, of cleanup there. And it's, it's really, it's really a resource that's available to you, either tonight or in a different forum. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. All right. So before we open it up to the public, so I, I have a, a couple announcements here. So there's been some feedback to the city in regards to making sure that what you say goes into the minutes. And, you know, if you have something in writing that you want to come up and you want to read into the oral record, after you do that, give it to Ingrid, and then we'll put that whole piece into, into the minutes, into the official record. Also, you know, we have received some written record, and at the end of the meeting, I'll acknowledge the, the written material that we have received. And then, you know, if you have some written material that you want to email, and do we have your email address? I'll, I'll state it, and maybe later we could put it up on the screen for everybody. But it's baylands@ci.brisbane.ca.us. And of course, you could always mail it to City Hall, which is 50 Park Place. All right. So we have a few slips here, if anybody else would like to speak, just form and, and give it to the city clerk. We've got a full room, and it is, you know, we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak, so we'll have a three-minute opportunity to speak before the council. And, and that will be on items that we're talking about right now, remediation, Title 27 landfill closure. If there's something else that you want to talk about, let us know, and, but that'll only be just for one minute. We want to focus on the subject matter at hand. So I'll first start off with Anya Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to you-- Good evening, council. As, you know, I'm a resident that has been extensively involved in studying the EIR for the Baylands, and... But I find that there's one area of more recent concern that has not been adequately addressed, even after all that, and that is the impacts of sea level rise caused by climate change. No matter how successful previous remediation efforts of toxic lands elsewhere may or may not have been, as you've heard, the long-term effects of seawater rising to inundate the Baylands brownfield and landfill, or to contaminate groundwater under it, must be seriously studied before you proceed with development decisions on this toxic bayfill, all of it. The main official body dealing with the issue of sea level rise in the Bay Area is BCDC, the Bay Conservation and Development Commission. I was surprised to learn today that some of their staff members in that agency don't even know Brisbane is in San Mateo County. But I'd like to quote here anyway from their website. They say contaminated lands pose a threat to public health and the environment due to their potential to release hazardous substances in the event of a climate impact. Such a release could occur through groundwater migration, surface water flow, soil exposure, and release to the air, which is vaporization you've heard about. Different types of contaminated lands are vulnerable to sea level rise in different ways. Sites contaminated with solvents, for example, are sensitive to rising groundwater because solvents can go into solution in groundwater and spread underground or cause air quality problems in buildings constructed on top of the site. You've heard about that. Sites with PCBs, on the other hand, may be more sensitive to storm event flooding because PCBs bind to sediment, which could be eroded and carried to the bay during flood events, adding to already high levels there. So this hydrology was covered during the EIR process, but not in a climate change frame. And that's where both of these, the floods and all kinds of storm events come in, besides the sea level coming through whatever caps you have. Some sites can be cleaned up through the removal of contaminated soil. That's been raised here, but I don't know if you're thinking of it. While others, due to technical challenges, additional environmental risks, or funding issues, are more likely to be remediated in place where, depending on the remediation and climate impact, both could still pose a risk to human health and the environment in the event of a climate event. So that's what I'm trying to say. You need to take that, and San Mateo County is really leading in looking at the sea level rise. I believe CCAG is aware of that, and I really think this is a new thing beyond whatever those studies have been done, or whatever effects from 20 years ago, there was no sea level rise consideration at all. So please pay attention.
Thank you, Anya. Deb Horn?
Well...
You know, Mr. Mayor, this is really an important, important subject, and our ordinance does state five minutes, and I think that we should give people the five minutes and then, you know, I think set another meeting to continue the public hearing, because I don't believe that we'll finish tonight, but, and I don't like to extend the meeting, but this is important to people, and I think that we should get all their comments on record, and I think that we should go with our ordinance of five minutes, and then after that, they can come back and speak again, but it'll probably be at a subsequent meeting, so...
Okay. Yeah, no, I think, no, you're absolutely right about that. And just because we're having this meeting doesn't mean that, you know, we're trying to finish this up in one meeting. If we needed to have another meeting, then we'll do it, so, all right.
So, but the intention is to stop at 10:30, correct?
Well, you know, we have a certain amount of slips here, and we might be able to get through it, so let's see what happens.
So I have a copy here, in case you get nervous that I'm running over five minutes.
Okay, thank you, Deb.
Deb Horn, resident of Brisbane. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all, mayor, members of the council, members of the community. What surfaces for me amongst the millions of details about the toxins at the Bayland site are large looming questions. We've heard the term tonight scientifically defensible. I work in science. I know that scientific truths have a shelf life. Truth in science is only good for what we know at the time. Putting leeches on a sick person used to be a best practice. Now that would be a malpractice. So breakthroughs in science often come from questioning scientific certainties, overturn truths that seem like mythology in retrospect. So my unease about the Baylands is that there's so much we don't know, and there's no clear path forward to gain the needed understanding. First, almost the entire Baylands project is built on fill. We know that dating back to debris from the 1906 earthquake. The fire and remains were dumped around Brisbane, and then there's the dump where we got all of San Francisco's trash since 1967. The rest of it's the old Southern Pacific train yard. There's no records of exactly what toxins are in major portions of this land. Second, from 1990 to 2009, soil has been brought in and piled on the Baylands from construction sites, including excavation from a subway station, and it's not been tested. There was no testing protocol until 2009. That's 19 years of dumping, and I wonder what's in that dirt. And last, our safety nets. The many governmental agencies, and we saw them all up on that slide, involved in the regulatory oversight, often admit that we don't know everything about the potential downstream and combined risks of some of these chemicals, constituents. While there are many good people who work at our regulatory agencies, we sadly sit at the eve of a major deregulation and both policy and financial gutting of these agencies. So we all know that many of the toxins in the Baylands are dangerous, known suspected carcinogens, some perhaps lethal. Some regulatory bodies say that their formula for parts per million will protect our health, safety, et cetera. Good enough for the residential. We're looking at probabilities, not possibilities. What is the shelf life of these protocols, these certainties? Regulations are often designed to promote commerce, with some provisions for health and safety, like the 10 different FDA laws and regulations enacted between 1964 and 2009 anti-smoking by the FDA, and the majority of them did not protect innocent bystanders. I was going to talk a little bit about Love Canal as a travesty, but I think I'll just save my time on that. It's just basically a lesson about how serious tragedy can be re-messaged by environmental experts and stakeholders with vested interests. So it seems like we have to make some land use decisions before the remediation based on some very old reports. My question is, how can Brisbane make a far-reaching decision that may put families for generations in harm's way 24/7, before knowing the extent of the toxicity when there are so many unknowns? We do have to make some decisions before we know these things. The quandary is compounded by the fact that the remediation in the Baylands does not mean cleanup, it means capping the toxins on land that can liquefy in a moderate earthquake, land that will be impacted by climate change, not just sea rise, but extreme storms and floods. Questions for the experts. How secure is a cap on land that has been rated at the highest level of liquefaction risk in an earthquake? Has a cap been tested on similar land in an earthquake? Is there a guarantee that the cap toxins won't migrate and escape with sea rise? So in summary, I just wanted to say that this is not an MB issue for residents of Brisbane. The people of Brisbane live our core values, we care about each other's well-being, we care about preserving the environment and creating a sustainable future, we care deeply about the health and safety of our current and future community. The Baylands is part of our community, not our backyard. We have no desire to be innocent bystanders, vulnerable to gaps and unknowns in regulatory knowledge and practices that may put our community's health at risk. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Dana Dilworth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Clearly, staff has not attended BB-CAG meetings lately because the report is inaccurate and doesn't bring up the most important issues, which I think this evening should be talking about the inefficient mitigation measures that are proposed. The staff report leads us to believe that state and federal oversight of hazardous materials, and I'm quoting, "highly regulated," and the inference is to not worry. This is incorrect. There are thousands of untested and unregulated chemicals in use, only a small portion are tested, and then when they are, there are games of omission or averaging that scientists play when they don't get the results they like. Given the current Trump-osity banter about government regulation, you must take fair ground, you are the lead agency, you can do better, and we need better. Rather than minimize the 30 years of unregulated chemical waste by using the word landfill, why don't we label them correctly? As carcinogenic, endocrine disruptors, mutagenic, reproductive failures, developmental delays, morbidity, and the like. Tell the truth about Stafford Chemical Plant, Fry's Tannery Factory, because they're asking us to believe that these are equal to other areas that have been recently developed. There are acid and chromium pits right where housing is proposed. Why aren't the toxic burners mapped, both the present ones and the future proposed ones? Why are we ignoring the flammable white elephant called Kinder Morgan? The staff report would lead you to believe that this is a run-of-the-mill, gas station spill standard remediation, and it is not. And with 20, 30 years later, we expect differently. Issues in the report is the landfill's not closed, it only ceased operations, and that's a legal definition that I think you should correct. Stormwater reporting is voluntary, and so we probably have never really gotten the first rain or sufficient sampling because they're using an industrial permit, stormwater permit, which is the lowest possible standard to make. The, I yelled out, "don't lie" because this report keeps talking about how residential standards are higher, but that's not what's proposed, that's not what's in this document, so don't lie to the public. But it did kind of come out that, yeah, we're not really doing it to residential standards. The conclusions about CDM and Dr. G. Fred Lee's reports are inaccurate. And, you know, we've seen Vic Powell from the Regional Board admit that there are major data gaps. That was the conclusion of CDM's report, major data gaps. Yet not one word in this document speaks to the effect of major data gaps. Are we changing our standards by having the language about the sustainability framework? Because these are standards yet to be negotiated. I don't think that's how law works. You really need to look at every line in the documents and not take the Cliff Notes or the Suekey note version. Third-party verification is obviously needed. Independent folks would point out that you need more frequent monitoring than annually. Recent experience of building a retaining wall out on the northern Schleg portion of the property, where an underground storage tank was discovered and improperly handled, amazed that we even know about it, because that's something no, I wouldn't tell anybody. But as soon as MAC-Tech signed off on the land being safe to build, surprise, we find some lust, some leaking underground storage tanks. Lastly, land is not fill. I would bring your attention to Dr. Peter Ward of the University of Washington, who has written a book called The Flooded Earth, in a radio program with Michio Kaku. He is quoted as saying that all reclaimed parts of cities are going to go away, meaning be pulled out back to sea, that three-foot sea level rise means that the storm surge, the big storms, will come whooping in and remove a lot of the sediment. You're not going to be able to hold it together. Any city with reclaimed sediment construction will have to be rebuilt somewhere else. And you have failed to look at liquefaction. I have some YouTube places you can look for Fukushima liquefaction, Christ Church liquefaction. It's, liquefaction is quite serious because the earth shifts and the liquids come up from underneath. And I would suggest that in the materials you've requested for contemporary situations that may not have worked, look up Treasure Island, look up Alameda Air Force Base, and look up Hunter's Point Yellow Cake, because these are all situations where DTSC has signed off on something, and oops, look what we discovered later, and then they come back and say, there's not much we can do about it. We need to have better standards than claiming that these agencies are going to do the job for us.
Can you, can you give all of that to Ingrid, please, and all the sources for the YouTube videos and the book that you stated?
Sure.
All of that, so we can, we talked too fast for me to write, so...
Okay. Saw the numbers, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clara?
I'd first like to thank you all for your comments, it was really heartening, and for the sustainability framework, and I also appreciate the planning commission's recommendations, and also the previous speakers. I thought both did a, I'm humbled to follow them, and I thought they did a wonderful job. But in terms of triggering, in the future, triggering information of how we'll know something's happening, this is a question that you ask. You know, we could have the expert that you hire periodically check the health statistics from the county and environmental health department, and you can also check to find out about recent research and how things change as far as the toxicity of contaminants that are on the site. I have an area here where I've gone page by page, but I wanted to just address some of the things that have been said. And I'm very happy to hear Dr. Mearns suggest an HHRA for the entire site, how important that is, I don't think we could even measure. And the issue of 20-year-old reports, at the BB-CAG, we've really been concerned about that. And you were assured by Mr. Zala that this is only about the general plan, and the, I believe he's referring to the fact this is a programmatic part of the EIR before the project EIRs, but my understanding is that the conclusions you come to at the programmatic EIR only, and the requirements for action only kick in if more information is found. And if no more information is found, then it wouldn't kick in for any new actions on the part of requiring more environmental reports. So I think that you might want to clarify that. Differences with Sierra Point. Sierra Point is a landfill... Sierra Point is a landfill that was engineered, the fill is engineered, and also it was, the filling was done in a regulated atmosphere. That's not true of our landfill. So there are many differences. And they talk about how the Property Owners Association is able to handle the monitoring. And I think that's pretty close to absurd if you think of a whole bunch of different chemicals, you have no idea what you've got, or you have very little idea. I think it's very important that you are very careful about the technical aspects of this kind of future monitoring and trying to put it somehow in the hands of HOAs, which have trouble figuring out details on their own property, let alone all the details of a landfill. And it was said earlier that ERD actually stands for Enhanced Reduced Dechlorination, rather than Degradation, because these are chlorinated volatile organic compounds. So on page one, I've heard so many people talk more eloquently than I'm going to do about the fact that it's not clean. We're not talking about clean. You're talking about safe according to the existing regulations. We're lucky enough to have all kinds of scientific research going on, and that scientific research is likely, in some cases, to produce information that will show that some of these chemicals are much more toxic than we think that they are today. That has occurred with benzene in the recent past. And the word, I know what was bothering, or I think I do, Dana, when she talked about highly regulated. There are some phrases in here that clearly are intended to calm the reader, and I don't think that they're justified. I don't think you should be calm. I think you've shown how seriously you take this, and as I say, that's very heartening to me. As far as adequacy, on page four and full paragraph two, it states that some information about what OU1 and OU2, there's more known about them than there is about the landfill. But what is also true is that there's more known about the groundwater on OU1 because it's been studied more than OU2. And I know there were at least two instances where contaminants showed up in testing on OU2, but we couldn't get anybody to ever do anything about that. All they said was, well, it didn't show up anymore, and it's kind of, one of them was a heavy metal. So I think that a careful review of the reports that are there is warranted, because if you read enough, you find out that there were pathways that were gone down but then abandoned because, well, we didn't say it again, so let's not worry about it. And I'm not sure if they were right to worry about it or not, but certainly raised the issue because it was found there. On page four and the last line, they talk, they give you a list, and they say, these are primarily the elements that are there, and they list them. And the truth is that there are dozens of other contaminants of concern, but their amounts are below the maximum contaminant level. And in the period that's been studied, they have not risen to levels that are close to that. So nobody talks about them much, but if you go to Enviro Store and check the groundwater monitoring that's being done, you'll find that there are dozens. And the concerns people have with, we're not, about all those things, we're not sure of. That's the point, isn't it? To me, what we're talking about here is we are trying to protect human health. We're not being philosophical about it like people who have to do it every day. They know they work with a law that's incomplete, that is, maybe mostly protects human health better than it was before, but that's not necessarily what we're looking for. What we're looking for, actual protection of human health. So we understand that we're not going to be putting people in a place where they're going to get sick or they're going to die. And I think it's good to be very straight about that, as you were. And I think that that's, I appreciate how much you care about all this. I just want to say that.
Clara, do you have a lot?
Are we five minutes?
You've been quite a bit over five minutes. But, you know, how about this? I mean, I'd like to get through all the slips, and I know that, you know, people have been there quite a long time, and so I want to be able to let them, I don't want them to leave and not talk. So if you wouldn't mind, Clara?
Not at all. Not at all. I will either write this to you or come back in your next meeting and complete what I had to say.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so John Burr? John, I guess left. Okay. David Umberg?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for hosting this important discussion tonight. I'm a San Francisco renter, and I'm also a civil engineer. I've worked on brownfield sites throughout the Bay Area and landfills. I'm also working on the Schlegge site. And I'm here tonight to advocate that we allow housing as an allowable land use for the Bayland site. I know this is an important discussion, and there are many here tonight who are worried about contamination on site. And of course, naturally, we want to be protected from chemicals, heavy metals, other potentially hazardous substances. Fortunately, I believe that it's a compatible use to be able to go out there and remediate the site in this rigorous regulatory environment in a way that is protective of human health and environmental health. And how do you do this? It's simple. As you've heard from the staff report, housing is not allowed on site, nor are other uses allowed on site until the site has been cleaned up to the satisfaction of the regulatory agencies. And the agencies here include the California Water Board, California EPA's Office, DTSC. These are overseeing the regulatory effort, the remediation, and I can tell from experience that these are not easy agencies to please, nor should they be. I mean, it's the public's health that they're protecting. So at the Schlegge site, for example, just north of the county line, so it's possible that similar methods would be used in the Schlegge site, as would be used in just south of the county line, OU1. There's been now over two decades of testing, remediation, and further testing to make sure it's progressing as intended. So, for example, there was, you know, the risk assessments that they've alluded to, but in addition, there's also detailed testing to delineate the extent of the contamination, the concentration, to figure out, you know, exactly where does a remediation effort need to focus. So the EIR, for instance, there's enough information to make a land use decision, but there may not be enough to do a targeted remedial effort, and that, we know what's there. We don't know the exact limits. That would have to be established, to the extent that there's a data gap that would need to be filled as part of the remedial effort. So at the Schlegge site, after they've established that, then there was some extraction and treatment of groundwater to remove VOCs. There was excavation of soil to isolate heavy metals. There was that ERD process that was alluded to, where they injected nutrients and beneficial bacteria into the groundwater to help speed up the biological degradation of contaminants. And all throughout this process, there was a network of dozens of monitoring wells, both in San Francisco and in Brisbane, to monitor on a quarterly basis, as it was here, the extent of the remedy, make sure it's progressing as intended, make sure we're looking at the contaminants that are of concern at the site, and watch the degradation as it's progressing. And even after all that effort, the development at the site, the Schlegge site, still needs to have these land use controls, engineering controls, to make sure that the even minimal risk of contamination at the site is further minimized for sensitive populations. There might be hardscape, there might be, well, there has to be regular inspections, maintenance, continued monitoring. So this is a remediation process that's robust, and I think it's also the one that's been applied at Sierra Point, at Mission Bay, at sites around the Bay Area. And it's one that I think is protective of human health, environmental health. I think that another question that may come up is, you know, that's all fine and good why you're saying that, but would you be comfortable living there? Would I personally be happy with my family and myself living there? And the answer is, I am comfortable with the process. I've seen that the results do work. It's a robust regulatory environment, and yes, I would take the first home. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Tim Cohen? Colin? Cohen.
Good evening, Mayor Lentz and members of the council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tim Cohen. I'm Executive Director of the San Francisco Housing Action Coalition, a 17-year-old nonprofit that, whose work is how to advance smart growth and solutions for the local, regional, and state housing affordability crisis. On behalf of our 300 members, our interest in the Bayland site is because of the regional impacts that your land use decisions will have. We are strong supporters of the mixed-use alternative and urge you to consider your responsibility to the region as well as to your city when you deliberate. Before coming to the Housing Action Coalition, I worked for 10 years as a geologist for an environmental consulting company in San Francisco as a contractor to US EPA Superfund Program. My work was to conduct the technical investigations and assessments to determine whether contaminated sites across the western United States were eligible to be added to the US EPA Superfund list. In this work, I collected many, many thousands of environmental samples, soil, sediment, groundwater, surface water, air, and so forth. If I had a dollar for every sample I'd collected, I think Jonathan Scharfman would be working for me. The fact that the two operating units that comprise the Bayland site are not on the Superfund list says that the site is rather more routine, not significantly large, and not among the more serious sites as a threat to human or ecological health and safety. That's not to minimize the importance of what remains at the site and in doing a thorough cleanup. It's just to say that the Baylands does not appear unusual as these sites go. In fact, there are likely dozens of similar places around the Bay Area where former industrial lands have been cleaned up and successfully put back into productive use. You've heard in San Francisco, the Mission Bay and Schlegge Lock sites are just two such examples. There is no reason why the Baylands could not be similarly treated. You've heard tonight how extensive and well-established laws, how well-established they are that govern the cleanup of these sites. There are two powerful state agencies that have jurisdiction at the site, the Department of Toxic Substances Control and the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and both have a long history of successfully monitoring and overseeing environmental remediation. In my experience, they're respected, they hire competent people, and they perform quality work. Remediation is very expensive and much slower than we'd like, but the evidence shows that their work always meets or exceeds California's statutory requirements. They protect the health and safety of our citizens as they are tasked to do. So we question why Brisbane's preferred alternative doesn't appear to have elicited the level of environmental alarm as the proposed mixed-use development. The level of remediation required for future residential use is much more stringent than that for future commercial or industrial use. Wouldn't that be a better thing for Brisbane? We encourage Brisbane to proceed with the cleanup that has a goal of putting this valuable land back into productive use as quickly as possible. I'd remind you that the Baylands is adjacent to a Caltrain station within a designated priority development area. This implies certain clear expectations for its use, specifically locating housing and jobs close to transit. If we are ever going to have a prayer of addressing the Bay Area's critical challenges, it's necessary that the Baylands be planned for the future and not for the past. Thank you for listening to me.
All right, thank you, Tim. Joel Diaz?
Good evening, Honorable City Council Members. I'm Joel Diaz. So on the news the other night, Channel 5, they were talking about Mount Jackson, and there was a mercury mine there. And the Regional Water Quality Control Board deemed it safe. And they've just recently tested it, and it's four times higher than what's normally considered hazardous. And this mercury is migrating into the river, the Russian River, and it's infected the fish, and it's been going on for years. And this was deemed safe, and still currently is deemed safe, by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. So the system is flawed. And, you know, based on the current limitations to science and technology, you know, it is possible that some of these situations could be developed. You know, if we do proper risk assessments of the area, maybe we could do housing, in theory. But the long-term liability is severe, and it's a real problem. And we can say that we can set up the funding, but we really need to quantify it, because if it was hundreds of millions of dollars that it would cost us, that may be insurmountable. Liquification is a real problem. And, you know, all of that ground could heave up, sink down, and we would have a real disaster, humanitarian disaster on our hands. That would be, who knows what that would cost to repair. Even the rail yard is landfill, and it's deep. If you look at the historical photos, it is very deep landfill, rubble from the city of San Francisco, which means bricks that have asbestos, all sorts of materials, lead. So we need a lot of assessment. I think that's what I heard here tonight, is that the consultant recommends that we do more updated assessment. We probably need ongoing assessment, thorough assessments of the entire site, not just limited testing. And I think we really need to ask ourselves, you know, the question is, is the risk, the long-term risk, worth the reward? What is the reward for us doing this? I don't see the rewards that warrant taking on this liability. I don't see, in the fiscal analysis I saw, I don't see any significant money to pay for maintenance. Even with the special assessment districts, how many thousands of homeowners do we need to pay potentially hundreds of millions of dollars or more? And then what does that do to our community? It's a really bad plan. I'm not saying that any, another plan might be okay, but this particular plan has a lot of flaws in it, a lot of holes in it. And, you know, no pun, but it has potentially thousands of holes in it with these piles. And these piles are potential pathways, because there are little capillary systems around these casings and the piles where vapor could rise, water could move around. And I think with the Doubletree Hotel in Sierra Point, for example, I think they have about 100 piles for that hotel. So in this development, we're talking about potentially thousands of piles. And while they're driving piles, sometimes they have to do more. So, you know, that's how these things happen. So it could be a real tremendous amount of piles, thousands of pathways. And so what becomes statistically safe, like with the residential scenario, I think the consultant told us it was like one in a million people would get sick and die potentially. If you have thousands of pathways, that number goes up dramatically. So this is very real. People will get hurt. People will potentially die. And it's very serious. You know, I don't think any school district would responsibly want to take land out there and then be responsible themselves for any long-term liability that could bankrupt a school district. I think that has to be looked at. And, you know, there's some talk about environmental insurance policies, and somehow that's going to cover us in this event. And I'm wondering if Ignacio could provide us some information on that, so we could see, you know, what the coverage is, what the exclusions are, these kinds of things. And I think that would be very helpful, because I have a feeling that that coverage really doesn't exist, not for this magnitude, not for this size of a project. So definitely think we need to have more updated assessments done. The ones that were done are outdated. The standards are very different today. And it needs to be more thorough. It can't just be a few holes. Some of the holes were not found. They were buried. And I have a strong sense that there is migration there. Over the decades, migration of chemicals from the west and from the east have made it onto that site, and I think we need thorough evaluation of that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Joel. Michelle Salmon? Michelle Salmon. So we're past ten thirty. Can I get a motion to go to, say, ten fifty?
Yeah. So move, Mr. Mayor, but I think we should cut it off because it gets too late and then...
I'm at my last slip, Clark. Right? I hear ya.
Okay.
Michelle?
I used to believe in the system, and I used to believe in the regulatory agencies, and I used to believe if you told the truth, that would win out. But I don't believe those things anymore. The Northeast Ridge, that kind of wiped me out because, you know, and what it comes down to is, it's all about money. And I watched a very disturbing film last night called Before the Flood with Leonardo DiCaprio. And all of this discussion is, might be irrelevant by the time we ever quote-unquote break ground. But I still have to fight the good fight. And when you come here and you look at this and you're like, so what's in the monitoring wells right now? Where are they? Because when I was cleaning up out by the lagoon, there are these like PVC pipes that I was trying to pull it out of the ground to throw it away. I'm like, what the hell is this? And I thought, oh my God, is this one of the monitoring wells? Oh, here's another one. Is this one of the monitoring wells? Well, nobody's monitoring out of these wells. So where are the monitoring wells out there on the landfill? Because they're now covered with thirty to seventy-five feet of dirt that gets moved around all the time. So where, how are you monitoring the monitoring wells? And what about all the monitoring wells that are out there on, on the O U two and O U one? I'd like to see them. I'd like to know that they're active, that they are really being monitored and what chemicals we're looking at. There's so much we don't know. And when this whole process first started, they're like, oh, there's no tire dump out there. We had to go get the documentary, No Deposit, No Return, to show that there, yes, there is a tire dump out there. And there's a whole lot of other stuff out there. And you're kidding yourself if you don't think that there's radioactive waste from the shipyards there as well. Nineteen thirty-two to nineteen sixty-seven? Get real. So you don't even know what we're dealing with out there. And you expect overburdened public agencies to regulate the remediation for this when it's not like they're not doing their jobs, but their jobs do not include new research. Their jobs include reiterating the stuff that has already been done by, you know, the consultants and the fox, you know, watching the hen house. I really appreciate the work that you people are doing and that the planning commission has done and the citizens of Brisbane have done to make sure that we do the right thing here. And I think we all know what the right thing is. I just hope we can stick to it and not be swayed by money and, and people are willing to live on toxic land and then sue you for it. All right, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming to tonight's, oh, you wanted to speak, Greg?
Almost.
Sorry, I thought you were going to continue this to another meeting.
I think we are continuing this discussion to another meeting.
Yeah, but, you know, Greg's been here for several hours.
No, no, I, no.
We've gone through all the slips. I'm up here now.
Yes.
I'll say a couple of words. So Greg Anderson, three forty-nine San Bruno Avenue. The question was asked, can you restrict or require piers to go all the way down to bedrock? By God, yes, you can. By God, yes, you should. How many piers could you put on the eastern side where the distance to the bedrock is two hundred and fifty feet or more? Probably none. So there's two kinds of houses that you could put out there, or buildings. Low houses, three stories or less that float, six stories or more, big piers. So just, you should leave the east side clear, maybe put some light industrial up there near ecology, and leave the rest for open space and solar panels. I'd even like to see if, you know, do we really need so much open space on that area? I don't know that it would be the best place to put a soccer field or a baseball field. Maybe pass-through with more, even more solar fields would be better over there. A lot of talk has been made about being environmentally and socially conscious and having high-density housing, and high-density housing is important. But in order for high-density housing to really be an environmentally superior option, you need a lot of renewable energy because cities can't, that density can't provide enough energy for itself. So we need areas like the Baylands, which are not good for building other things to put solar panels and other alternative energy. So I hope that you will consider that when you get to land use. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Greg. Okay. Anybody else? All right, well, thank you. Thank you so much for coming to tonight's meeting. So, yeah, you know, I'm just providing the input, and I thought council asked, you know, some great questions, and, you know, I think we got some intelligent response from, from the folks who were making the presentations tonight. You know, so this is our first hearing, first item we're up for discussion is, is the Brisbane Baylands? Yeah, it is late. I think we should have our discussion when we're fresh. So we all agreed that we would look at our calendars and try and schedule something relatively soon after a meeting so that, you know, the subject matter was, you know, current with us. And so do we want to take a look at our calendars?
We're not deliberating on anything, right? We're just hearing information?
I mean, it, well, I mean, if there's anything that we want to discuss, yeah, we're definitely not making any decisions. But I mean, yeah, definitely not. This is, we're gathering information. But if you wanted to talk, I mean, it sounds like you want to continue the meeting, so are, are we good with...
Well, I suggest we just leave it till our next meeting, continue the public hearing. And when we make it through that, then we start on the next, next item, not schedule a special meeting for it, but, you know.
Okay, well, we...
Mr. Mayor, I mean, the only problem with that is that we have to schedule consultants to be here. So we, we kind of have to have, that's why we have the subject matter schedule.
And we have gone through all the people that wanted to speak tonight, Clark.
Excuse me, I was going to...
Oh, okay, I wasn't, well, you put your hand up and then you put it back down like you did.
I thought we were going to continue it.
And that's what I thought.
Well, you know, since you've been sitting for several hours, you know, why don't you come on up and speak? Well, why don't we allow the people that are here to, to finish saying what they need to say?
Yeah, I mean, it's just unclear to me whether we're continuing this or not. I don't want to extend this meeting even further if we're going to be having another meeting. But if you guys are going to be away talking about things, then there are some things I'd like to say, so I'm sort of caught between whether or not I should interject myself at this point or not.
I think that the, the reason to extend the hearing to another meeting was if we had too many slips to cover within the time, right? And so we've gotten through all of them, so if we just finish with Barbara, I don't see the need to continue on this particular discussion, right?
Okay.
But we're still going to need to...
There's quite a few people that left, I know.
Oh, because we had stated that, I see.
They looked at the time and...
And, and we also need to discuss it among ourselves, so we're going to need to keep with this conversation a little bit more, and I have some...
Yeah, no, and that's why I've asked, you know, if, if that's the case, and let's, let's pull out our calendars and let's schedule that, that meeting if we, if we feel we need to have another meeting to have greater discussion.
But I thought that when we discussed the schedule for the Baylands, that we wanted to make a commitment to our times and our lives besides just the meeting schedule and that we didn't want to try to have so many meetings.
You're absolutely right, but we did also agree that if we didn't have enough time to get through a particular item, that we would schedule something, you know, in between so that we could finalize that particular item, and then we can move on because we know that, you know, we'll have to schedule, you know, the staff people to, so that they can be here to ask, I mean, to answer the questions that we're going to have. So, you know...
Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify what I said because I don't want any confusion about it. I mean, if you decide tonight that you want to carry this over to December fifteenth, then we, we've got plenty of time to reschedule with our consultants. It's just that we, we, you know, we couldn't, I, I wouldn't want to have the scenario of continuing this conversation and then also having that subject matter on there in case you had time. That, that's the only, you know...
So for the fifteenth, is that a regular scheduled meeting or is that, that's a Baylands meeting?
That's a Baylands meeting.
Okay, and then for the fifteenth, you know, potentially we had, did we have...
Traffic, transportation, yeah.
Traffic, okay. So, you know, we would, if, if we continued the, you know, this portion of our hearings, so we would have a discussion in regards to remediation and then also traffic or...
Well, you know, we could try that, but my sense is just because of the subject matter, if you're going to do this on the fifteenth, you're probably going to just need the whole meeting on the fifteenth.
Just bump it out.
And then we push out the schedule by one, by one month.
I have a question. So you say discussion on remediation. So my understanding was we were taking public comment and asking questions, but not deliberating or discussing at this point? So what, what, what's the level of discussion that's expected at the council level at this point in the process?
Well, for me, after hearing, asking some of the questions and then hearing from the public, I have new issues that have come up that I'd like to address, and I think that it's information that the public and the council should be aware of. So while we may not be having discussions as far as final land use, which I think is the discussions we're not having yet, I think we can have discussions about the appropriateness of the EIR on a specific topic.
So more questions that have, have come about? And I ask questions that we won't, that we don't have answers for right now, so it would probably benefit the public to, instead of just me getting an email response and the council getting an email response, and then it being up to the public to go and then find that in the record somewhere, it'd probably be beneficial for those answers to be televised. Is that what you're talking about? Discussion about those sorts of things that like we ask questions about that we aren't, we are still unclear on?
You know, this is what this meeting's about, is to, to ask questions, you know, to get information, and then, and then move forward to the next item, you know, and, and ask the questions and get the answers. And then you go through all the different parts, and then at the end, then you have your deliberations. You know, I mean, we've, we've covered a lot tonight. We could have that meeting on the fifteenth that's just focused on the remediation and, and, I mean, I might have some questions, but definitely not in the same detail as before, and I don't expect the staff to, to go through another presentation again. And so, and that's why when we were talking about this, about the schedule, we thought, okay, well, if we didn't finish something, we'd evaluate it and see if we could hold a, a special meeting just to finalize that rather than holding a, you know, a whole meeting, a whole, a whole, you know, like additional hearing for that, that matter in the schedule that we've laid out, just so that we can finish in May. I mean, that, that, that would be a goal to, if we could, you know, finish this process in a, in a timely manner so that then we could start the deliberation process in the summer. But, you know, I mean, again, you know, it's, it's up to the council, you know, what the council would like to, to do.
In my opinion, I think that remediation is probably one of the biggest issues that the community has. And certainly, I think, the root of concern, a lot of the concerns that we've already addressed and, and things that are going to greatly factor into our decision-making. I mean, this is one of the biggest aspects of, of the whole decision. And so to me, I mean, we want to stick to a plan, but you can see with our, our planning commission, they had a schedule, they, we thought they were going to be done in, I think it was like April, and they ended up being done in, what, August, September? Or no, until I think maybe October, or no, August, August. So you can see that, I mean, they had to adjust their, their schedule because some issues needed more time. So I think that it's, it's not unreasonable for us to do the same. That's not saying that we're dragging our feet, but what it is saying is that we're taking that time to really fully evaluate, give the public time to digest this information, come back with more questions, and have our questions be answered in a public forum. I think that that is important.
No, they, we're not saying that, we wouldn't do that. You know, do, do we want to, you know, have a whole month before coming back to this particular subject matter?
Yes, yes, you know, I mean...
It's the holidays.
Yeah, yeah, I mean...
But I think in general, it's good to have the subsequent meeting if there is one, like as close as possible to that first meeting date because the information is fresh in our heads right now. And if we wait a whole month, you know, we're going to lose some of that. So I think, you know, I understand the holidays and Thanksgiving and everything, it might be hard this time to schedule it, but I think it would, the idea of having it one topic per month was so that it would limit the, the reading. And so to insert just an additional meeting doesn't mean we have any more to read, it's just an additional meeting. So I'm fine either way, depending on the scheduling, but I think in general, it's good to schedule the topics as close together as, you know, each topic to finish it as soon as we can so we can retain the information before we get to the next meeting.
And I think that that's like important to keep a priority, but at the same time, like if you looked at last meeting, it took us until January thirtieth to come up with a time to go visit that place kind of over, what, the North Bay? So we also have really packed schedules too, so I think it's important to try and make that a priority, but I also think in looking at being realistic, it's really hard for us to add additional meetings that haven't already been predetermined because of how busy we all are. So I also want us to be reasonable when we are thinking about that. It's totally fine to make that a priority, but, you know...
Let me, let me make a motion. I'll make a motion to continue the meeting to December fifteenth, the public hearing.
I'd second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we're good. So thank you, everyone, for attending and...
The letters.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, so the written correspondence that has been received by the city clerk after the last Baylands workshop on nine twenty-nine is from Linda Detmer on eleven seventeen sixteen, County San Mateo Health System, Universal Paragon Corporation, C.C. Herman, Elna Miller, Carol Quackenboss, Colleen Mackin, Alex Tonison, John Tyers, Sarah Fitzgerald, Carol Quackenboss sent another written communications, Marcus Conan, Carol Quackenboss again, and Sean Sweeney. And these were taken in from nine twenty-six through eleven seventeen. And so that information will be part of our packet for the next meeting. All right, thank you, everyone, and have a nice evening.